All right, good evening. I call to order the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October 17th, 2024. It is 6:32 PM. Present this evening, we have Commissioners Ned Hacker, Pete Hurstow, Michael Henry, Michael Richards, Jake Pearson, Lisa Milkovich, and I am Mayor Patterson. I'm the Chair. From staff, we have Zachary Smallwood, David Rogers, Ruth Ruck, and Mark Richardson is here with us also. We welcome the public. We are always grateful when you are here and participate in our meetings. Some etiquette items to review. We ask that you take a moment to silence your cellphones. And when the time comes to make a comment on an agenda item, we ask that you would come to the podium and speak into the microphone, which is recording. We also ask that you state your name and address for the minutes. Once the item that you are here for is over, you are welcome to leave. We just ask that you do so quietly, so that we can continue with our remaining items on our agendas. If you are viewing this meeting online on the live stream, the only way to make a public comment is to email planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. If you post a comment on the Facebook or YouTube stream, it will not be seen. So we'll start with our business items. Approval of minutes, we had none, so we will move on to conflicts of interest. Do any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of the agenda items tonight?
No.
No.
Neither do I. Approval of findings of fact, have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the findings of fact and conclusions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of facts for Vera Salon Suites.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to our agenda item number four, a conditional use permit for soccer house LLC. Is the applicant here with us? Okay, great. We'll have you come up in just a minute. Thanks so much. First, we'll have a staff report by Ruth Ruck.
Thank you. So here we have an application for a conditional use permit for an indoor soccer field located at 4083 South, 420 West. So here, the proposed soccer field would occupy a 6,000 square foot building on a 2.9 acre lot, and the site is highlighted in blue on this map. And here is the zoning map to show that the subject property is zoned for MG, or manufacturing in general, and it's surrounded by other properties zoned for MG as well. And here are the site plan and floor plan provided by the applicant to show how the existing building will be utilized. It'll include artificial turf for the soccer field, two office spaces, and spectator seating. And so the subject property has a shared access point at 500 West, which is circled in red on the map. This access also leads into a private lane, and so as a condition of approval, the access at 500 West will be restricted. And the total number of parking stalls required is 23, and the applicant has provided the required number of stalls, but as a condition of approval, we'll need to restripe the parking lot. And per city code, we sent out 15 notices to the public for this proposal, and we have not received any comments. So based on our analysis, these are our findings, that the proposed use for an indoor soccer field is allowed in the MG zone, subject to conditional use permit approval. And with the conditions outlined in the staff report, the proposed use and property will comply with the standards of Murray City Land Use Ordinance. And finally, the proposed use is not contrary to the goals and objectives of the Murray City General Plan. And so with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit for this project at this property, subject to the following conditions. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
On your pictures on this thing, have you shown the... Can you go back to the overhead plot? Please? Is that the correct section of that building that's marked? Or is it the northwest section?
Yes, that's the correct.
Or is it the whole building?
It's just that portion of the building.
Okay, because that doesn't look like it complies to the address that's written down here.
I'm sure it does.
Okay, and one of the items that you gave us, I'm just trying to understand which part of the building they're going to be using. This handout that you gave us, that looks like that's part as 4091 South. So I'm just trying to understand where, which part of the building is.
No, it's split into four, and it's 40. That section highlighted is correct.
Well, I know it's split into four, and at least on this one handout you gave us, that section of building is listed as 4091 South.
So I believe, can you show me what picture you're referencing? Okay, so yeah, that one was pulled from an old application. So as you can see, if you'll go forward one, please.
I think you might have it oriented wrong too, because wouldn't it be like this? So this says 4020 West.
Well, that's actually a very good picture.
But you're like oriented the other way.
This building that's cut off right here.
Yeah, that's the building that's cut off right there is, would be 4083. What we did is, so this was what the applicant provided to us. We couldn't adequately count the parking spaces that were previously approved in the development. So what I did is I went through some historic documents and found the one that you now have in your packet, and that's what we based our parking counts off of, and the condition to restripe the parking based on that site plan.
Well, and then on this picture here, you're showing the parking area, lights and everything, again on the northwest part of the building and not the south.
Again, that was provided by the applicant, and we're using the one that, we are using the one that was provided in your packet. That's why I'm telling you, that one right there is being used as how we counted their parking.
This one, I'm sorry.
Is how we counted their parking, because we could not see adequate parking in that area. We know it has it, and it's possible to have it. We just want to make sure that those are adequately striped in the future.
And I guess that goes to my next question, and I don't have any real problems with this. This sounds like a great use for this property, but why isn't the inclusion of the ADA striping one of the conditions?
It is. Oh, ADA?
Number five.
So it would be required regardless, even in the parking. Our code does require that every 25 spaces, you have to have one ADA space. So that would be required in the code regardless of conditions. One, that's in our land use code, but it's also in building code as well.
Wait, wait. So how is, hold on. Where is it? Where's condition number five? Ah. I mean, we could, if we wanted to, right? We could just say...
It would be redundant, but you could.
We could, well, I mean, we could just say in accordance with the code.
Again, if you want, it would be redundant, but yes, you could.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. If we could have the applicant come forward to the microphone? And if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name's Omar Haymes. Our address is 4083 South, 420 West, Murray City, Utah.
Great. Have you had an opportunity to review the six conditions?
Yes.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
Absolutely, no problem, yeah.
Okay, great. Is there any additional information you want to give the Commission about your project?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
At this time, I will open the meeting for public comment regarding this item. If you would like to make a public comment on this agenda item, you may do so by coming to the podium. Please state your name and address into the microphone for the record before your comment, and try to keep your thoughts to three minutes. We ask that you offer new information in your comments, and please do not rehash already stated concerns. After the public comment portion of this meeting, we will address your questions and concerns with the applicant or staff. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment regarding this agenda item? Did you receive any online? All right. I will close the public comment period and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
So I have a question for the applicant. Does he need to come back up?
Yeah, will you come back?
Thanks. So I'm just curious about the size of the field. It seems like a smaller field, you know, with the recommended soccer field usually around 200 feet by 95 feet?
Yeah.
Curious, and then you're also going to add bleachers and spectator space. Curious why it's smaller?
That's the, we try to maximize space, but also allowing no space for spectators. We wish it was bigger. Unfortunately, it's not. We're also now going to use, usually in indoor soccer, you do six V six. We're doing it five V five.
Okay, that makes sense. I just was curious.
Yeah, no problem.
And it'll be soccer, not foosball or something else that's usually on a smaller court?
It's going to be soccer, yeah. Yeah, just soccer.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Okay, first.
Sorry, I guess I didn't give you a chance when the applicant was up here. Yeah, any discussion or a motion?
Madam Chairman, I make motion to the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow an indoor soccer field at the property address 4083 South, 420 West, subject to the following conditions, one through six.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker and a second by Commissioner Richards for the Planning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to allow an indoor soccer field at the property address 4083 South, 420 West, subject to the six conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion?
No.
We can take a vote.
Sorry, I got lost in thought for a moment. Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurstow?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. So motion approved. Good luck with your project. Thank you for being here. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number five, Addison Vista subdivision amendment. Are the applicants, is applicant here? Okay, great. We'll have a presentation by staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this is a subdivision amendment for the Addison Vista subdivision regarding the properties at 818 West and 822 West Addison Vista Circle. This is an overview that kind of orients where this subdivision is off of 7th West and Bouillon Street. This is the surrounding zoning. It is an R18 zone and is surrounded by R18 and A1, so everything around it is residential. The two lots are both under a quarter acre. So this is the current subdivision. We're looking at lots five and six, and you can see how it's more of a straight line there on the north end of how those two lots connect. And the applicants are looking to adjust the property line. You can see I've just focused on those two northern plots, northern lots and lots five and six, and they will be adjusting it by approximately 278 square feet that will be moved from one lot to the other lot. 16 public notices were mailed in connection with this proposed subdivision amendment, and as of the date of this meeting, staff has not received any emails. Based on the analysis and review of the subdivision amendment, the subdivision of land is allowed by Utah State Code, and this proposed subdivision amendment will read those requirements, and the proposed subdivision amendment complies with the regulations of Murray Code Title 16, the subdivision ordinance, and the applicable standards of Murray 17.100, which is the R18 zone. So with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the proposed subdivision amendment for the Addison Vista subdivision, following to the following conditions, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I guess I have a question. I have the utmost confidence you've already done this, but, so it's in the record, and because it's not in the written record for the public to read, we should just discuss it. With this adjustment, the lots both would meet the minimal lot sizes and all the setbacks required?
That is correct. So if you look on the new subdivision amendment here, you can see that both lots are over the 8,000 square foot minimum for the R18 zone, and the change in the property line does not impact any of the setbacks. Both of the setbacks, the eight-foot wide and the 12-foot wide setbacks are shown on the plat.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, if the applicants want to come forward. Will you just state your name and address for the record?
I'm Carly Reese at 818 Addison Vista.
I'm Trenton Stapley at 822 Addison Vista.
Thank you so much for being here. Have you had a chance to review the conditions?
Yes.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
Yes.
Great. Is there any additional information you would like to give the Commission?
Nope.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any questions for the applicant before I send them there? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now open the meeting for public comment regarding this agenda item. If anyone would like to make a comment? And, okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make another motion to approve the proposed subdivision amendment for Addison Vista subdivision, adjusting lots five and six, which are the properties addressed 822 and 813 West Addison Vista Circle, subject to the following conditions as listed, one through three.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker and a second by Commissioner Henry to approve the proposed subdivision amendment for Addison Vista subdivision, adjusting lots five and six, which are the properties addressed 822 and 813 West Addison Vista Circle, subject to the three conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Hurstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Chair Patterson?
Motion, yes. Motion approved. Thank you for coming tonight. All right. Agenda items six and seven will be presented together. Is the applicant here? Oh, okay, great. So first, we'll have a staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this is a zoning map and general plan amendment for the property located at 6231 South, 900 East. This is an aerial overview. The site is one, just over one and a quarter acres, and it will be going from the R18 single-family zone to the GEO general office zone. So this is the current zoning. As you can see, it's currently zoned R18. There is residential neighborhood business across the street, A1, which is low-density residential to the north. There's open space to the south, which is Wheeler Farm. And then there is R18 across the street further as well. The future land use map currently calls this area low-density residential with, as you can see, parks and open space to the south, low-density residential to the north, and residential business to the west. So low-density residential is intended for residential uses in established planned neighborhoods, as well as low-density residential on former agricultural land. The corresponding zones are A1, R18, R16, R110, R12, R112, and R210. And then the office, this designation allows for a wide range of office uses in an environment that is compatible with adjacent residential neighborhoods. Development pattern should establish the livability of surrounding residential neighborhoods while contributing to the success of nearby business areas. Development will generally be individual buildings or small clusters that are scaled similar to adjacent residential areas, and the corresponding zones are GEO general office, which is what we are looking for tonight, and the R and B residential neighborhood business zone. So these are the differences between the R18 and the GEO. When you look at housing in the GEO, residential is not allowed except for assisted or retirement living facilities, whereas that is the main function of the R18 zone. The height is actually a little bit shorter in the GEO than the R18, depending on distance from residential, but since this parcel is basically surrounded by residential, that 30-foot requirement would be the maximum. The setback, 20 feet in the GEO compared to 25 feet in the R18. Rear yard setback is normally, is none under certain conditions, but next to residential, it's 20 feet, whereas 25 feet in the R18. Side yard setbacks are 10 or 20 next to residential, whereas R18 is eight with a total of 20. The corner yard setbacks are identical, and parking is between four and five spaces for every thousand square feet compared to two spaces per lot for an R18. So the Murray City Code requires property owners be notified of rezones, and so 19 notices were sent for the requested amendments to the future land use map and zone map to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property and to affected entities, and affected entities include things such as utilities and other cities. As of the date of the meeting, staff received two emails that were forwarded to the Planning Commission ahead of this meeting and are included in the record. So for our findings, and I mentioned in the pre-meeting, a change in the findings that I will discuss here. So the general plan provides for flexibility in implementation and execution of goals based on individual circumstances. And number two, amending the future land use map will allow for cohesion with neighboring business uses. I accidentally put residential in the staff report, but business was the intended word there. The proposed zone map amendment from R18 to GEO has been considered based on the characteristics of the site and surrounding area, and staff believes the potential impacts of the change can be managed within the uses that are allowed in the GEO zone. And the proposed zone map amendment from R18 to GEO conforms to goals and objectives of the Murray City General Plan and will allow for an appropriate development of the subject property. And so based on our findings and analysis, staff makes a recommendation to, recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval for both the Murray City General Plan future land use map and the Murray City zoning map to the city council, redesignating the property located at 6231 South, 900 East, from low-density residential to office in the future land use map, and from R18 to single-family low-density residential to GEO, general office as described in the staff report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a question about the height restriction next to residential. Does that mean that, so as we look at this map, we can see that there's houses to the But is the zone to the north, is it just because it's zoned residential that the setback? So the zoning is what is the setback?
The zoning is what determines it, not the building.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, if we could have the applicant come forward. If you could just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Jared Cameron. The address is actually 6271 South, 900 East, but all the maps show the same.
Is there any information you would like to give the Commission about this application?
I'll try to keep it somewhat short for everybody. We've been working towards this goal. I've owned the land for, originally I owned it probably 12 or 13 years ago with a partner. I've since bought him out. He was the original guy that developed the entire neighborhood that everybody's concerned about to the east. I've since purchased him out, and over the years, we've had some different ideas. The original plan was four homes in there, and the neighbors didn't really want it. And then when I bought him out, I was planning on doing a single home in there and just splitting it in half, so two-thirds of an acre apiece on each side, and doing some small office building out front, and then keeping the other half for myself. And the neighbors also didn't want to have that either. So the short version, we don't have access to the private lane to the north. So the past four or five years, I've been working with the city. It's been kind of low priority, but I need to do something with it, because at this point, I just grow a lot of weeds on it, which nobody's happy about that. But we've worked with the city over the years to go with, the couple options we came up with were general office, R and B, the commercial neighborhood business, and we even spoke about R16 to do that in there as well. And I think general office would provide the cleanest solution for it without getting as messy, I guess. I think it'll do, it'll add a lot of value. We, the three or four years ago plan was to, which is when I, because it was originally zoned agricultural, we changed it as a stepping stone process to R18, and I just did the whole thing all at that time. And the original plan back then, about four years ago, four or five years ago, and we changed the zoning originally from agricultural, was to put the furthest east part adjacent to the neighborhood. I was going to keep a third of an acre for myself and build my own home back there still. And then we, I drew up a full set of plans, and at the end of the, and then have a building of some form out front with a general office or one of the other zonings there that we spoke about. But at the end of the day, I drew up a full set of plans. I even had to turn it into Murray City to approve it and everything. And at the end of the day, my wife nor I could swallow it to have a residential, being that we don't have access to the private lane, which is understood. We couldn't swallow it having, I have four kids, and it just didn't seem logical to have one single-family home tucked in there, which would have been great adjacent to Wheeler Farm. My folks actually live in that same neighborhood as all these others do, and it would have been great to have them live next to grandma and grandpa and all that great stuff. But to have one single home behind an office building of some form, it just didn't seem like the solution. And at the time, it was going into COVID, and we all got busy and had all the issues of getting ahold of anybody and everything else. We kind of just tabled it for a couple of years and let it go. And now I'm back. But I've spoke with the city council multiple times. I think the general office solution is the best solution for the given situation, for the kind of a transitional area. Is it perfect? I would like to do other things probably if I had my own opinion, but at the end of the day, I think it's a great solution for the given situation. And what I'd like to do, I mean, I can come up with ideas all day, but without getting up to bat, I don't know if it matters. But what I'd like to do is build a small, a small building on 9th East, right, adjacent, you know, with the setbacks and whatnot, and then a parking lot of some form. And then I'd like to do a light, a small senior living home that's not really a nursing home by no means, because it's not big enough to supply all that kind of, the needs that it needs to be. But that's what I'd like to do. I'm just trying to be honest with everybody and upfront. At the end of the day, if it doesn't work, I don't know if it will, but I think general office is still the best solution regardless of that. So that's my, that's all I've got.
Questions for the applicant?
One of the first things you mentioned is that you had looked at putting four houses on that, and that was not approved, did I understand that?
Yeah, so originally with the neighborhood, we had, the developer that developed the land that lived in the neighborhood at the time as well, we were going to do four third-acre lots that accessed the private lane, that is the same size of lot as all the other homes in the neighborhood, for the most part. And we thought that was a great solution, and in fairness to the situation, I was kind of letting him, the man's name is Terry Sider, I was kind of letting him take the lead because he lived in the neighborhood with all the people. So I kind of stayed out of the majority of the personal conversations or whatnot that come with it. But then the night before, we went to this meeting, the planning meeting, we had a neighborhood meeting that I was involved in, and it was not a fun meeting. Nobody was happy about it, or at least some of the, I don't know if nobody was happy about it, but some of the people were very vocal against it, and we kind of took it off the table and left it at that. And then it went for four or five years before I purchased him out and tried to do the single home in there to keep it to myself, and I had another round of meetings with the neighborhood, and it's a no-go. I sincerely tried, I've drawn up, I drew up a nice house. It's going to cost me a small fortune to build. I'm a builder by...
Can I ask?
But that would have been in compliance with the zoning that was there at the time?
Absolutely.
And access from 9th East?
We were trying to build my single home with access to the private lane.
Access to the private lane was the catch, right?
Correct. The neighbors don't want any part of that, and I completely understand that, that's fine.
But why I ask? Because it was your own property. You could have built the house and put the driveway on the other side if you wanted to, but the discussion was the use of the single lane, right? The private lane?
Yes, yes, yes. So that it's a part of a neighborhood as opposed to what the round three that I did on a couple of years ago to just do a single home myself adjacent to, you know, driving through 9th East, it just didn't seem logical to, and we really tried out, drawn up two complete homes, and it just doesn't. That's why we've decided to just do all of it as a general office, instead of trying to dice it up and do a little bit of both, because it just defeats the whole purpose. It just... It just turns it into a road.
You have no right or access to that lane without the other. You have no right or access to that lane?
No, it's a private lane. It's a private lane, and it's completely understood.
Well, I don't and commission, don't we have something in our land where it's saying that we can't build on private lanes?
You can't subdivide, right?
So, the city wouldn't let allow you to build on that private lane?
So, because of that, I guess my question was Ninth East, I think, is a UDOT road. Have you been in conversations with them about?
A little bit.
The access that you'd be able to get because they're not always sometimes kind of a drawn-out process?
They're a government organization, which is work just like all government organizations.
And they're very restricting, I think, on a lot of their major roads.
They are, but at the end of the day, it'll it meet they can't deny me access. I purchased the land from UDOT. And they 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 flat out said that.
It just I guess it would be how long it would take to be able to get?
What's that?
How long it would take to maybe get the UDOT approvals to be able to do that?
I don't know. That's I haven't been up to bat to in until you have a full set of plans and you're going for approval. It doesn't doesn't really matter. Just do everything with it. And until you can do all that at the same time, it doesn't matter. They they won't give you approval just on an empty lot either way. That there's nothing to approve access to.
Yeah. Any other questions for the applicant?
They ju- just so that you are aware, they have given me prelim- preliminary approval originally when we spoke with them.
Okay.
But until until it's done, that that was all the time during COVID. And it was such a everybody was efficiently working from home at the time, and I couldn't get a hold of a single person. And the main the main couple of people there was a struggle.
Yeah, I know it's the issue other people have run into is getting UDOT approval.
It took like four months because this was right at the the thick of COVID in the spring and summer of twenty twenty. And it was a disaster trying to get a hold of all the people at the state. You couldn't get a hold of anybody. It took like four or five months to go through it, and that was after I was frustrated, to say the least, in dealing with, you know, you go to everybody's boss to get people to do their job.
Yeah.
Which was sad.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll have you take a seat.
Good.
And I will now open. Where's my little paper? I'll open the meeting for public comment regarding this item. Again, you will have three minutes for your thoughts, and we ask that you don't restate something that has already been said. And any questions that you have will be addressed after the public meeting is closed. So, if anyone would like to come make a public comment.
Hello, my name's Len Smith, and I live at nine eighty East Wheeler Farm Cove. So, if you brought that sketch back up again, our homes to the east, and we live in an HOA with seven other homes. So, like Jared, I agree, not excited about the idea of having somebody build an office building and having my home right next to that. I'll read the letter that I wrote to the commission. In late twenty nineteen, we began searching for a home in the Murray area. We built a new home in twenty sixteen, just just off Highland Drive and fifty-six hundred South. Within a year, we began having difficulty entering onto Highland Drive from our neighborhood due to traffic congestion. We discovered the city planned several new developments that would only increase the traffic on Highland Drive and further exacerbate street access. We found a home in Wheeler Farm Cove in twenty twenty and checked the zoning for the adjoining properties and found them to be residential. We confirmed this with the HOA president and moved forward with our purchase, comforted in knowing two sides of our property joined Wheeler Farm and would always be zoned agricultural, and two sides would always be residential. The traffic on Ninth East is problematic. I don't know whether any of you have ever been there on a Sunday morning when when they during the Wheeler Farm farmer's market. I think that's a great project, by the way. I think it's wonderful for all of us, but it is absolutely a zoo. We cannot get out of our driveways. And there's not a lot of police maintenance of Ninth East. And I think there there's certainly a lot of other things that they're dealing with, but people drive fifty to sixty miles an hour on Ninth East now. And when we go to pull out, you cannot see either to the north or the south, so we have to creep out, and then we jump on it on our cars to be able to pull out into the lane. And anybody that has a State Farm insurance that has that little thing where they keep track of your speed and your acceleration, we all get notices. So, to me, adding a commercial building with potentially multiple occupants with only will only add to the difficulty entering Ninth East and increase the risk of serious accidents. Vehicles routinely drive on Ninth East at fifty miles an hour and faster. The applicant, Mr. Jared Cameron, requested a change from agricultural to residential prior to our purchasing our property, and this request was granted. I think it's great. I request the current classification be maintained. Further, I do not think an applicant should be allowed to request a zoning change without offering agricultural or architectural renderings of the proposed structure, specific use plans, so the zoning commission can evaluate the impact on existing residences and the traffic patterns on Ninth East. I would always I would welcome all of you to drive to our lane, the private lane we're talking about here. It's a beautiful little lane that leads back to seven homes. Changing that and building an office building there that's thirty feet high that's going to border that, to me, is absurd. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Do you want any questions before I sit down?
Sorry, what was that?
Did you want do you have any questions before I sit down, or do you want me to?
No, we don't have questions for the public.
Hi, I'm Joyce Swan. I too live on Wheeler Farm Cove. I'm actually representing Kevin and Becky Potts, who are also residents on Wheeler Farm Cove, and they are out of town. They didn't receive this notice prior to making their plans. So, I will read the letter that they've they've constructed.
We received a letter in our packet from them.
Okay.
Yeah.
I
So, their public comment has been made, but if you want to make a public comment for yourself?
Is it the same letter?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I don't know. Is that fair not to read it, I guess?
Well, we their public comment is part of the record that's been included in their packets. Like, we've all gotten it and read it already. So
Okay. Just a couple of comments. I, you know, I agree with Len that it's so hard to come in and out of Wheeler Farm Cove now. I mean, it's just you have to kind of plan your time of day. You don't want the traffic, you know, you don't want traffic at at rush hour or at certain times of day for that reason. I agree to put a any sort of commercial building on that would be wrong. The fact that he wants to put his home on there, that's fine with him. That was the plan in the beginning. And that we've denied him access to our lane, that is a private lane, and we all pay for that lane, and it belongs to us, and we've chosen not to share that with any other residence building outside of that. So, I agree with the others that it should stay residential. So
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I've got.
And just so the public knows, those letters that were sent in were already sent to all commissioners, and we've had a chance to read them. So, that is already part of the public record.
Well, my name's Russell Swan. I also live on Wheeler Farm Cove in Murray, been a Murray resident all my life. And I have some different questions. I come up with the same thing. It shouldn't be there. It's wrong. You should keep it in the development where it is on the same zoning. Have you guys looked at how narrow that lot is? Have you seen the narrowness of it? Have you seen the big power pulls out in front of? These are not small power pulls. And I'd like to go back where it says the panel approves this. I thought this meeting was to find out if it was going to be approved or not. So, you guys have already made your mind up that it will be approved? Is that what we're talking here? And do we find out who on the panel approves this? I I'm I'm very confused at the way you look at things. I don't know how in the world you can look at this and want to put a go zoning in it. It befounds me. That's my viewpoint on it. I hope you can look at it, make proper sense of this decision, and do the right thing and keep the zoning the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we address his question about?
We'll address it after. Yeah.
My name is Carl Lind. I live immediately adjacent to this property to the north on a ten-acre piece of ground that was my grandfather's and father's and is still agricultural ground. It appears to me that this is kind of like asking for zoning along Walker Lane to commercial property for this reason. The Skaggs Homes are immediately north or east of this property across Little Cottonwood Creek. The very nice development which has been done in Wheeler Farm Cove is all of homes that are expensive, much like other properties that you might know well in Holliday. The ten acres which we own currently, I'm a man of eighty-seven years of age, unlikely to build on it or do anything to it. But in the future, I would think that you have a resource there for some magnificent homes along the creek that will definitely be detracted from if you zone a commercial property immediately on the on the immediate south and along Ninth East. Now, given Ninth East is a major tributary for traffic, it is a nightmare, especially if I have to pull a hay trailer out. I've asked your Murray City Police to escort me at two in the morning so that I could get a sixty-five-foot truck and trailer out of those driveways onto Ninth East without injuring the motorcyclists who choose that time of the morning for a raceway on Ninth East. I have a proposal. I received in the last week this billing from you, which is a, if I recall, it's a stormwater creative billing that I got shortly after Murray City was incorporated. And since I have a lot of buildings on the property, barns and other buildings, I'm paying some fairly significant. I get a number of these, sometimes five of them at a time. I would suggest that Murray City considers seriously purchasing this property. To do so, you could divert the funds from this rainwater building that everyone in Murray is paying for. Donate or allow the county to purchase that property and extend Wheeler Farm to the driveway of Wheeler Farm Cove. It would be a great it would be a great augmentation of what is needed at Wheeler Farm, and for the same time, I think, could be paid for as you are currently paying for this building. I would caution you about setting the standard here for commercial housing on this side of Ninth East because I think you have a gem there for future beautiful homes that you will change now. Are you are you ready to zone the entire frontal of that property on the east side of Ninth East commercial?
That's your time.
Thank you.
You want to ask for clarification?
Hello, my name's Caitlin Nielsen. I too am a resident of Wheeler Farm Cove. I had a couple of questions. When I was reviewing what independent living or assisted living requirements were, it was much different than the regular general office requirements. And so, it had like if you were doing a studio or if you were doing a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom suite within the independent or assisted living headquarters, then there would have to be specific parking places that go along with that. And so, I think that those need to be reviewed before any decisions are made as well. I'm going to just read what I've got here. As other homeowners have mentioned, this is our fifth time before this committee to plead our case regarding Jared Cameron's zoning preferences. The last zoning request two years ago, which was not during COVID, to R one eight single-family housing was granted. Today was the first time I heard that there were ever any plans to have just a house in the back and some type of business in the front. It was always zoned two years ago for two homes on a flag lot. We finally thought Mr. Cameron would be moving forward with his plan to build two homes on his flag zone property lot. After four different zoning requests and owning his property for approximately ten years, Mr. Cameron finally met with UDOT to gain official access to his property. It is my understanding that when Mr. Cameron met with UDOT, he was informed that he would need to change the curb and gutter to the property and move one of the large utility poles on his narrowed property. Once he learned of the additional expense of the the two of the two homes with moving that large utility pole, he was graciously zoned were no longer feasible for him. It was my understanding that that's when he came back to the city to come and find a way to make the property more profitable for him. We're all meeting again because, as I understand from the Murray zoning department, Mr. Cameron would like to build an independent living facility on his flag lot. I highly suspect that Mr. Cameron has not put any thought into what an independent living facility entails.
That's your time.
I I really would like to just go through a couple of these things because I think it's important for you guys to think about this.
Well, we've given everyone the same amount of time.
I I may I take somebody else's time? Would that be all right? Thank you.
That's not that's not really how it works. But yes, you can you can finish your statement.
Okay, it's fair. It won't take long.
We let you know at the beginning how much time you had.
Right, and I apologize, I timed this, but there were a few things that have come up that have surprised me within this whole presentation. Independent means the residents have an automobile that will need covered parking spaces. Parking must also be available for visitors, facility workers, and home health care vehicles. Independent residents have expectations of a dining room and gathering spaces. Since this becomes a high-traffic business, will UDOT require both utility poles be moved? Emergency vehicles need access to turn around on the property, most likely a large T. If it is zoned into general office, Mr. Cameron will need to build a six-to-eight-foot wall the entire length of the property line on the north side. Mr. Cameron's flat lot, flag lot, is one point four acres. I believe that and I guess today we learned it was one point three five. I believe that when Mr. Cameron puts a sketch pencil and calculator into this project, it will too will no longer be feasible for him. In addition, the lot is on Ninth East across the street from Holly Lane and the Autism Center and our entrance. I can't imagine trying to navigate the traffic and the accidents that will occur. I believe we've all seen multiple traffic accidents a few a few blocks away on Vine Street and nine hundred east intersection with a traffic light. I implore the city council and Murray City to decline Mr. Cameron's request until, at the bare minimum, he comes to this body with an actual plan with thought and research as to how it can be done safely before any zoning changes occur. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for your time and what you do to help us in the community, and we appreciate that very much, and your time here tonight in listening to us. I just want to emphasize the things that you've heard here tonight, all of our objections, the problems and the things that we occur there. If Mr. Cameron is permitted to put up his office building or whatever structure he intends to do, it will destroy our lane. The only way that you can relate to that is if you're willing to come and take a little stroll down that beautiful lane that is unique and beautiful and charming and one of a kind. You will never see anything like that anywhere. When my husband and I were first looking for When my husband and I were first looking for a place to build a lot, we were first introduced to the lane, and from that moment on, it was a get-go. We decided that this was the place, the lane, the charm, the beauty of it. It is a one of a kind. And for us to see anything destroy that, and it will literally destroy the beauty of that beautiful lane, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Procedural question, that's all it is. So the applicants have unlimited time, but the people that have comments have three minutes?
Yes. Were there any online comments?
No, there were not.
Okay. Then I will close the public comment period if we could maybe address some of the questions.
Yeah, I'm happy to address the procedure. So the way that a rezone goes in Murray City is that staff does an analysis and then makes a recommendation to the planning commission. The planning commission has the discretion with a rezone to either make a positive or negative recommendation to the city council based on their discretion. And then the city council will receive a presentation from staff as well, and they also have discretion to either follow the planning commission's recommendation or go or vote the opposite way as well.
Mr. Rogers, can we add to that description, which I feel like maybe we should do more often in these meetings, to the task of this body? Meaning, and in that description, can we include that it's not our personal opinion if we like something or don't like something, we're here to say if it fits the ordinances or the codes or the land use, right?
So let me do some clarification on that. So when it comes to legislative items and making recommendations to the city council, you do have a lot more leeway. You don't have to meet what, there is nothing in the code that says how you can vote for a legislative item. You have a lot more leeway there.
Well, that's true. That's true to the extent that if we're stating things that are supported by land use, if I say I don't like you as an applicant or something, and you deny it, then they could sue and come back and say there was nothing in your code that supports your denial, and they could win.
Right. Yeah, but so that, sorry, there was just a, I was hearing it differently. I was hearing like based on the zoning requirement, right? But what you're really looking at is, does this, does the proposed zone fit within the character of the neighborhood that's going into it? That's what you're really looking at. Does it fit the character of the area? Is it going to, will that, will that zone have a substantial impact on the neighborhood, the roads, things like that? You're able to take those into consideration. You're also more, you are more inclined to, as opposed, and I don't, that would come out wrong, I'm not going to say that. And so, yeah, that's kind of more along those lines. When we're doing these legislative changes, those are much more in your wheelhouse.
I always wish we would define that a little bit better because I feel like our, my fellow residents can make stronger arguments in opposition if they knew what the arguments should be, because sometimes I can say, I think this is so cute or quaint and love it, but I'm also thinking, darn it, it fits the ordinance.
Well, again, that would be project-based. When it comes to a project, yes, you are bound by what the city ordinances say. When it is legislative, you are not bound by what the ordinance says because there is no ordinance per se. You are looking at the character and whether this zone fits in the area.
That's right. As long as I can make an argument whether it does or doesn't fit within the area.
Correct.
Zach, can you also explain the process of why something would get rezoned before having a project or site plans or what the developer wants to do with it, why those two?
Yeah.
Or, sorry.
I just, sometimes I have a.
I'm sorry. Could staff, could staff explain?
Yeah.
The process.
He's fine with me explaining it. So, yeah, it has been the approach of Murray City, the city council, the planning commission that projects, potential projects do not come before the body during a change in zoning. The body is supposed to review the entirety of the zone and every use possible, every possible permitted or conditional use within that. The city has been burned in the past by somebody bringing in something, and then the zone gets changed, and then market conditions change or something changes, they sell the property, whatever, and it becomes something completely different than what was presented to the, to both bodies. And so in that vein, the city has opted to not allow for potential projects to be there because we do realize things can change. So it's in the body's best interest to look at the zone writ large as opposed to just a specific project.
So to be clear, then essentially notwithstanding what we've heard about potentially what might occur with the land, we're not really to take that into account. It's just whether or not this proposed zoning change would be appropriate for this area.
100% correct.
I think just to add, I think as a commission member, that's very important because we see project after project after project, and a lot of them never happen. And so when we make a change, like if we made one tonight or don't make one tonight, whatever the zoning is on this property, that could be, you know, Mr. Cameron could leave and he could get hit by a car, heaven forbid, and then someone else could own that property. And his plan, even though he had full intent of doing it, may change. Or, you know, like, like staff mentioned, maybe they can't make a pencil. And so they can, they can build anything that's allowed on the zone for whatever the zone is. I mean, there are building permits and there's processes, and if he, you know, builds an assisted living, he's going to have to fulfill all those requirements, and that's a process that he will go through. But what we need to consider is, what are all the potentials that he can do with this zone change?
Or anyone else, right?
Or anyone else.
Because if this gets rezoned and he sells the property and someone else could come in and make a totally different plan, and that's why we don't consider a project when we're looking at the zoning. That's, we're not in a public comment period. So I also just want to let you know that, you know, when we look at the recommendations that you saw, the way it reads is that staff recommends that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval. So nothing has been decided, none of us have made our minds. We've read the staff report, we've read the evidence that they've presented to us about why they are recommending approval, but that doesn't mean that our minds are made up.
We are not staff, just to clarify.
We are not staff.
We're not staff. They're staff, so.
They are making a recommendation, and we are going to make up our minds as part of your public comments and part of this discussion. So saying that we've already approved it and that our minds are already made up is not true. The other thing I wanted to address from staff is, you know, one of the suggestions was like, why can't we just like have the city purchase it or have it become part of Wheeler Farm, or why can't there be like a different solution than what is being proposed?
So the short answer is, is that that's not what Mr. Cameron has come forward with. The city, the city can do eminent domain. The city has not thus far ever done eminent domain as far as we can tell, and we don't take people's property from them.
Right. Because the property owner has rights.
Yeah, the property owner does have rights. It's in, it's in the constitution of the US that we have due process under the law and, you know, substantial property rights. It's a fundamental thing in the country.
But like you said, a whole nother discussion, we could discuss purchasing, and there's a process for that, but the process tonight is.
Correct.
The property owner wants to do right now.
Correct. Yes.
And the property is not for sale, so.
We don't know.
Nobody could, like, people couldn't just go and say Wheeler Farm, buy this property, right? It's not necessarily for sale. The last thing I wanted to just kind of address is, how many times can someone ask for a rezon on a property?
So unless it is a denied, a request is denied by the city council, which then there is a one-year timeframe if it is denied by the city council, they could come in every single day and apply for a new zone every time, and if they want to pay the application fee every time, obviously. But then we would, we as a public body are, we do have to take those and process them just like any other application that we would do. So, I mean, that's, that's obviously a little crazy to assume somebody would come in and apply every single, you know, every single day, but you, we don't have a limit on how often somebody can apply unless it's denied and then it's one year.
I'm assuming the residents were bringing that up though, not because is there a limit, there should be a limit, or can I, more so they're trying to point out, I'm assuming, trying to point out that we don't know what's going to be built there, and they keep changing the plan, which we are aware of. We're looking at the zoning, not the project, because there hasn't been a project presented. And traffic, there's a lot of questions about traffic.
Ninth East is a busy road. It's an arterial. It was, it is built and maintained that way. That's really all you can really say about Ninth East. It is a state run, oh, David wants to say that.
Sorry, I just, there was a question brought up about how certain uses have different parking requirements than other uses do in their zones. And as part of the site plan approval, for example, there was one that went through that was a daycare. A daycare has different, has different parking requirements than something else in the zone was. And so when staff reviews the site plan, which everything in the general office zone is required to come to planning commission for final approval, that's not a staff level approval, so anything made in the GO would come to the planning commission. But as part of the site plan review, staff would take into account what the parking differences are for one use compared to another use if it's spelled out in the code, and so that would be part of the site plan review.
And sightlines, do they change per project? Meaning with driveways, there's usually, what's it called at the corner? Line of sight?
Triangle.
Triangle that's required.
The site triangle. So those are engineering standards. And so that, when we do a site plan review, we route the project to all the different departments, departments in the city. So engineering looks at it, fire looks at it, police looks at it, to make sure that everything is up to the city code requirements under their purview.
So in theory, that sightline of sight might improve with the project. There might be restrictions on how close to driveways people could park. I don't know what projects they're going to happen, but.
Correct.
That's kind of one of my questions, I think, too, is if this were developed, it might actually improve the line of sight or the parking near that.
Oh, sorry.
Private lane.
When a site plan review comes in, it does have to meet all applicable city standards. So that would include engineering standards or planning standards, and would have to be developed under the current standards of the code at the time.
I've got to.
I think we're still.
Please indulge this, it's kind of a tangential question, but you said that, what are the restrictions on, no new residences can be built off of a private lane, is that correct?
Yeah, that was, I believe, in 20, it was in the early 2010s or maybe even a little bit sooner, that the city was getting a lot of requests from people that lived off private lanes to take their street at a substandard level that Murray City allows for our improvements. So typically, we require 49 foot right of way, right, 26 feet of asphalt, sidewalk, curb and gutter, all that fun stuff. And there were a lot of requests coming in. And so the city council decided that, yeah, no more subdivisions along private roads to prohibit those requests from coming in.
So does that include if the residents that own that private lane agree that they can build off of it?
Correct.
I'd like to ask more questions along that, so that the develop, the man prior to Mr. Jared, that owned this property, developed this neighborhood. So when he owned the property and developed the neighborhood, he, at that point, could have built on this piece of property and incorporated it to the neighborhood. At what point was he no longer allowed to use that street when he sold it to someone else?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
Well, I guess the reason for asking is because maybe originally they had access to that, and since then, by not building and not progressing, they've lost access to the private road?
Honestly, I have no idea, to be honest with you. And I will, I will inform you guys is that while the other agenda items were going, I was looking back through some of the other things, at some of the other requests, and I haven't found anything that there was ever access on there.
I know it seems irrelevant, I'm just asking because the case seems to be building, as well as me, I can't build, and so I'm trying to decide how much weight to give that. That's why I'm asking when the access changed.
Yeah, I think it was either, and I apologize, trying to keep all the what year changes or zones went in, I believe it was either 2007 or 2011. Those were when big changes happened. So it was one of those two years.
And I appreciate that and understand that this is, just for reference again, was the comment made by, submitted by Kevin and Becky Potts, are you aware if the assertions they made on the zoning are correct?
They are correct.
Oh, we have the city. We ask, please, please don't call out.
I don't know what I said.
We just had to ask in partial.
Staff has not gone back and checked if those dates correlated. Staff just received the comment and passed it on to the planning commission.
I think it's important to understand why we keep telling you guys to not speak. It's not because we don't like you, it's because this is a public meeting and all of the comments made in this room have to be on the public record, and so they have to be done in a certain way, and that's why we have a public comment period. That's why it's done on a microphone, and that's why, you know, if we're saying, please, you know, don't yell out from the audience, that's the reason why, not because we don't care what you are here for or say.
Can we discuss, are we at a point where we can discuss a zoning a little bit? What I'm thinking is, it's a little disappointing to me to go GO here. I feel like across the street, we've got R and B, and that zoning is intentional to be a buffer between the residents and the busy road of 900 East and the park and Wheeler Farm. And I understand that city planning, it would be great to have a little bit of commercial along that road because it is a commercial-type road and then residential. And to me, R and B seems to make more sense there. GO seems big. Can we talk about it?
Yeah, so I tend to agree with Lisa. The question I had is, I think she just explained it, but you know, why does the city feel like the proposed zone fits the character of this neighborhood? Even though it's across, I mean, I think what we're saying, the city is saying is that it's across the street from office, but that whole area is home. It seems like that fits better in that area and not the GO.
Yeah, so kind of like I had mentioned, and we can't, you as a public body, don't discuss a project, right? Me as staff, I can talk to Jared Cameron about what, or the applicant, about what their intention is. And after reviewing kind of what his intention was for the property, I felt this was the best zone to pursue to do that, and stated that we would support it. But again, that's neither, really, that's only because I know what the project is and what he wants to do.
But the question, part of the question they're asking is, how does that affect the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood and as well as the general plan for this area?
Sure, and again, without, it's difficult, it's difficult to say. In my opinion, if doing a independent living facility is what he intends to do, then that would fit pretty well in this area, I believe. I don't have a specific zone that only allows.
And that won't fit in an R and B.
An R and B. An R and B, it would be, I believe it does, it would be allowed as well. He was, the applicant was concerned with the design requirements for that zone.
The desire requirements of what we would like about this.
Exactly. And I understand that, but I, and, and he was concerned because the R and B was denied in the past in 2013. And so that was part of the reasoning for going for the GO. He, he did, when he was talking to us, ask for a higher zoning district, and I said, staff wouldn't support that. We just, we just wouldn't.
What, I'm sorry?
A higher-density zoning district. We wouldn't support it at that time. But with the, if I had a zone that just permitted just senior living, or, you know, senior living or independent care facilities, we would have pursued that. But this was the, kind of the direction I went. Again, that's just with what he had presented, not necessarily, and again, that's probably something I probably should have thought about a little bit more, because you're right, I should have looked at it. And again, I apologize, but please don't, we, we have people, this, this lady, we, we have somebody that's going to be listening to this and taking recordings of them for the minutes, and we can't have public outcry.
And, and I think we're intelligent adults and we realize that. We've said that a couple of times in the meeting. So I agree, it's okay. It's a project is not what drives a zone. We've said that.
And that's what I'm, that's what I have to try to give context. So, again.
Project doesn't drive zoning changes.
You as the body has to, have to decide whether that's appropriate. Not necessarily the use, but the zone. I know a little bit differently.
The project doesn't drive our decision here.
Correct.
But the zone is driving it, and we're saying that it should be GO.
But they're saying.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, staff is recommending the GO.
But I think we're saying, at least I am, and maybe Lisa, that GO doesn't fit the character.
Okay, and that's, that's entirely, that, that's why we're here, right?
Right, right. I just wanted to make that clear.
For sure. No, and I, I completely understand.
I think it's fair to say, especially in light of some of the comments that were made, too, that just simply going back to a, I guess, an R18 with the, with the shape and, and access to this property is probably not realistic either, given the, all of the comments about the traffic and everything on there. Nobody's going to want to live on that frontal space.
Well, they want to live there. They want to live there. You put three or four houses in, maybe the person, maybe the house on 900 East.
How do you put three or four houses on there? You can't, the only possible thing I can see you could do is what, with one flag lot, right?
Yeah, because, I mean, looking at the width of it, you take approximately 50 feet away from it, plus a cul-de-sac at the end, a 100-foot diameter cul-de-sac at the end.
To, if you tried to put more than one home on it, you mean, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you wanted to do more than one dwelling outside of a flag lot, you could do one home in a flag lot. We've, we've found out that that would work. But anything more than that.
But you can't do something like a flag lot with more than one home. The flag lot is just one, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so I think the only way, at least the way I'm seeing this, only way to make homes work there is to use the private lane. Otherwise, you, you, we can't, because that's not wanted, but, you know, putting the, the road on the other side, it just eats into the space.
Well, and I think it's fair to say, and I think all the commissioners know this, is property owners have some rights to develop and use their property.
Yeah, but.
And that's a primary consideration with what we're talking about, too.
But I feel like you're thinking, if this doesn't go GO, he can't use his property, and he could go R and B and use his property, he could put two houses on a flag lot on his property, he could sell it to Wheeler Farm, he could sell it to the seven properties that wanted to maintain a lane, seven owners who wanted to maintain into a lane. I mean, there's options, maybe not as the option he wants.
And I think that's what I was.
And I don't think we can plan it for him and tell him what to do with his property. That's why he has some property rights, at least within the zoning.
Definitely has property rights, but it's our job to make sure they, his use fits in the view of the city.
Well, and I agree, and maybe it sounds, I'm probably saying things on both sides a little bit here.
It's okay, we're trying to work it out.
I want him to be able to develop this property.
Yeah.
And if you read the amendments here, it's to, we're not telling him how to develop his property, nor are we telling him what he can't do with his property. We had very specific amendments of what we are asked to do here, and that is to change the future land use.
Well.
Not, not to decide what he's going to do, or even speculate what he's going to do, because the land uses, the land uses that are identified here tell you what can be done on those land uses.
There are restrictions, and there should be.
But we're not here to decide what those restrictions are. We're here to decide.
We are, we're here to, right now, this question is, is it going to be residential or is it going to be general office?
That's right.
So we are deciding what those restrictions.
No, he can develop whatever is allowed even in the R18.
I mean, I both think.
We're not, we're not deciding.
I think, though, what he's saying is, if we forward a recommendation to change this to GO, we are effectively telling him what he can and can't do with his property. He cannot build certain things on a GO.
If we deny the recommendation to GO, we're also telling him what he can and can't do.
So what we're doing is telling him what he can do with his property, and if we approve the GO, we're telling him he can do, what he requested he wants to do.
Both arguments are right.
If we vote no, then we're telling him what he can't.
Right, both arguments are right. We are saying what you can and can't do with your land, that's our job. I think one of our commissioners is worried about saying no, and then leaving someone with a piece of land that's not useful, and I don't think that's the case here. Because we wouldn't want to tell someone no, and then they have absolutely no options with their piece of land, that would worry me as well, because that's not fair to a landowner. But I don't think that's the case tonight.
Yeah, but that's, we're doing, but that's speculation, too.
Yeah, I agree.
We don't know what the future economics of any type of project would lead to, right? You know, we've got to balance the equities between a private landowner being able to use their own private property, you know, in an appropriate manner that doesn't conflict with maybe the greater good of the community or the surrounding area, which is kind of balanced, that's what we're talking about, balancing that, I think.
I really got to say, I was really frustrated, actually, when I saw this application. I was on the commission when he applied for R and B, and it was denied because we felt like it went too deep back into those houses, it wasn't acting as a buffer. So to then come and ask for a general office, I understand that it's because he has a project in mind, but I mean, I really feel like this is not in line with the surrounding zones, that redesignating this is not part of what we had future land use for this property. And I mean, he has options, even as he could split the property and, and make the front part R and B, and make the back part something else. You know, like us, him asking for GO, he can ask for whatever he wants, right? But in my opinion, this is a case of spot zoning, and I do not see how GO can be supported on this piece of property with everything else that's around it. I mean, I honestly, I feel like it's shocking to get denied R and B and to come back and ask for a general office. I, I, I understand that he has a project in mind, and that's how you get to that project. I also think, even if it was an assisted living facility, this isn't the right place for that. So, I mean, you know, that's just my opinion, but I don't know how we get to GO.
Was that R and B denied by the planning commission or by the city council?
It was denied by the planning commission, it didn't even go to the city council.
Actually, I'll clarify, it did, it went to both, and was denied both. The planning commission.
Forwarded a recommendation of denial.
So regardless of how you guys make a recommendation, they can pursue to the, to the city council.
The applicant still has the opportunity.
It just informs the city council on what your recommendation is as the land use authority. So if you make a recommendation of denial, if, if the applicant decides, they can still go forward and go to, and still have their due process, right, and, and go to the city council, who is the final decision maker. And so, yeah, in 2013, that's what I was looking up, is when that was, which was 11 years ago. I wasn't here, so I didn't know, I wasn't here for it. And so, yeah, I, I found the minutes for both, the, for that, and yeah, I was denied at both.
And I don't think that it is violating the property owner's rights. He, if he bought a parcel that is hard to develop and he's going to run into some issues, I mean, that, that is the nature of it. He can, he can ask for different zones, he can try and do different things, but that's, that's no, no denial of his rights of how he wants to use his property if it's.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, just to put it, you know, one more time, I guess, succinctly, I don't think it fits with the character of the area, and there's other options. I don't think that's denying anybody's rights.
And if we rezone as general office, it could be anything in general office, right? Assisted living would probably be best-case scenario, but say he can't make a pencil, he sells the property, someone else could come build anything else in general office. They might not be interested in assisted living. I just, I don't see how we get from R18 to GO in this specific spot.
And, and let me make a clarification also, I apologize. And this isn't meaning to sway in either direction at all, but I was looking through the R and B, and I'm, I'm surprised, actually, senior living facilities are not a conditional or permitted use in the R and B zone. So that's probably why I didn't really.
That, yeah.
That's probably why I didn't recommend.
And that's what I kind of said in the, in the pre-meeting, that if it's a use not allowed in the R and B, it seems confusing that we would go to the GO for.
Where we can't consider a project, even when we think is appropriate then, because it opens it up too much, it sounds like the zoning has two bigger jumps from one requirement zone to the next.
I think that's how some people on the commission are feeling, I don't know if that's a general statement.
So just from, from the staff's perspective, yeah, if, if a property owner comes to us and says, you know, that we'd like to do this, then we look and see, well, what, how is that feasible? And we would recommend them go the direction that would make it most feasible. So that would be how we would get to this point.
Is there any further discussion, or I'll entertain the motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a forwarder recommendation of denial to the city council for the requested amendment to the future land use map, redesignating the properties located at 6271 South 900 East, from low-density residential to office.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second. Sorry, staff just wants to say that it is 6271, and that was.
Oh, yeah, they corrected that address for us.
But, well, on the record, the motion has.
6731.
6271.
71, okay.
6271.
And I can out, repeat that motion. So I have a motion from Commissioner Hacker.
6271.
Yeah, a second from Commissioner Richards. To forward a recommendation of denial to the city council for the requested amendments to the future land use map, redesignating the properties located at 6271 South 900 East, from low-density residential to office. Is that right? Okay. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I think the, the commissioners have, have pointed out the real, the issue, and that is, when the R and B was put in on the west side of 900 East, it was put there for a significant purpose, and that was to protect the residential from the large buildings that could be built on 900 East. And I think that's the same issue here on the, on the west side, or on the east side of, of 900 East.
Any other discussion? Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I want to say I'm sympathetic with the landowner here on being able to try and develop this property in some way, but I really think going to the general office without us being able to consider any more information than that is just, is a step, step too far for this particular address.
Ms. Richards, did you have?
I just want to clarify, because this is one of those motions where you're recommending a denial, so yes means no, just so we understand, there's no confusion there, right? So if you vote yes, you're agreeing with the recommendation of denying.
Right.
So just make sure everybody, we're on.
Thank you. Make sure we got our ducks and arrow. Okay, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Milkovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Richards. Yes means no. Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Horisto.
Yes.
Chair Patterson.
Yes. So motion is approved to forward a recommendation of denial. So, so our next request to, oh, yeah, yeah, request to amend the Murray City zoning map, is there discussion or a motion on that?
Chair, I'll make a motion that we forward a recommendation of denial to the city council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the property located at 6271 South 900 East, from R18, single-family low-density residential, to GO general office as described in the staff report.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Pearson and a second by Commissioner Milkovich to forward a recommendation of denial to the city council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the properties located at 6271 South 900 East, from R18 low-density single-family to GO general office as described in the staff report. Is there any discussion on that motion?
May I just say one thing as staff?
Did I?
No, you did everything perfectly. I just wanted to commend the commission, and I want to make sure that the residents out here know, this has been a very lively discussion and has been well thought out. And I, go, in all honesty, it could go, it could have gone both ways, and I want you to understand that they do not make their decisions prior to hearing all the evidence and having this discussion like they just did up here. So I just want to make sure that, and I want to commend all of you, that I think that was one of the best discussions I've heard in, in many years. So that's all I want to say.
Okay, let's call for a vote.
And I, can I just say, I want, you know, thank you for that, and also the state, it's hard for us. We want to respect everyone's rights, or residents, too.
Okay, we can take a vote.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Horisto.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Richards.
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich.
Yes.
Chair Patterson.
Yes. So motion to deny or forward a recommendation of denial is approved. So thank you for being here. We always are grateful when the public participates and can witness the action of their city planning commission. Okay.
I would like to say something before any, you can't speak, no, it's not a thank you to us, believe me, it's not a thank you to us. I would recommend that the neighborhood over there get together with the applicant here and figure out what to do with that property. It'll be developed, it'll guarantee you, it'll be developed. So, and until that happens, I think all parties are going to be disappointed.
I think so. Sorry, sorry.
I think we're finished, ma'am.
Okay, we are moving on to agenda item number eight and nine, general plan and zone map amendments for Lotus Development. I see the. I see the applicant here. So first, we can have our staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Patterson. This is a request for future land use map and a zoning map amendment for 825 to 865 East, 4800 South. This is a change from the previous application that was heard on September 5th. Originally, it included this R18, single-family, low-density piece. After the commission's recommendation and going back and speaking more with the public, with neighbors of the property, they had put in an amended request to remove that. And instead of just moving it forward to the planning commission, I think we could have moved it to the, or I'm sorry, to the City Council. By omitting that, we wanted to bring it back down to the planning commission so that you guys also have a review of this change as well. It is in the GO zone, so this allows for general office. You guys are probably beat over the head about what's allowed in the general office at this point. And the request is to change that to RM25, which is residential multifamily, high-density. The 2017 general plan outlines this as an office, future land use, and the request is to amend that over to high-density residential. So the office designation allows for a wide range of office uses and is generally for individual buildings or small clusters that are scaled similar to adjacent residential areas. Higher-density residential allows for a mix of housing types, primarily multi-dwelling structures, but at a denser scale than other residential neighborhoods. So a couple, just a review of the two different zoning districts, the GO, residential density, it's not allowed except for retirement facilities. And RM25 allows 8,000 square feet per lot for a single-family dwelling or up to 22 dwelling units per acre. The height in the GO is 30 feet within 100 feet of residential zone. RM25 is up to 40 feet max, is approved by the planning commission. Front yard setback is 20 in the GO. Rear yard is none unless it's a budding residential. Side yard setback is 10 feet, corner 20 feet. Parking required is typically four to five spaces per 1,000 square feet. RM25 is 25 and 25 for the front and rear yard setbacks. Side yard is a minimum of eight and a total of, for a total of 20. Corner yard setback is 20 feet and then two and a half off-street spaces per unit. So we sent out 87 notices of the public hearing for the requested amendments, the future land use map. As of the making of this, I had not received any comments. I've received comments after. And findings, general plan provides for flexibility in its implementation and execution of the goals and policies based on the individual circumstances, provides direction to the city and its initiatives, and an application to amend the general plan will meet important goals of those initiatives. We've reviewed the GO to RM25 and considered those based on the characteristics of the site and surrounding area and feel that the change can be managed within the parameters of the RM25 zone. So with that, we are recommending the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for both the general plan amendment and the zone map amendment. And I'm happy to take questions.
I'm sorry. You said this came in in September. I think that was the meeting that I was at here.
September, yeah, September 5th, I think.
So I guess they're dividing part of this land off then and not developing it?
So, whoa. It is currently divided off. You can see the zoning here. So the original request included this, this slice, this one-acre slice of R18 zoning and this, this slice. So it was two parcels.
And that first portion has nothing on it right now?
It has a one, single-family dwelling.
One, single-family dwelling.
Yeah, which is like right.
There at the front of the property?
Yeah, right there. Right there at the front. You can see the little, the house.
Any other questions?
Goodness gracious.
This is probably not strictly relevant. Maybe again, it's tangential a little bit. But doesn't that kind of create another property that has the same problem as the one we just looked at? Where it's going to have a narrow frontage and a, and a big?
So Lotus still owns both of them, and they can utilize some of that space for, they could in theory use that as kind of an open space for the property next door without having to do anything different. Because it's just, they would be sharing those things. They're just not changing the zoning, which would thus then reduce the allowed amount of dwellings that would be able to be built on there and maintaining the single-family home in the area as well.
So that chunk right now is, it's R18?
Correct. And again, they couldn't, they couldn't further subdivide it either, same, for the same reasons. Unless it's a flag lot, which they might be able to do.
But I'm not even sure it's wide enough for that, is it?
I don't know if it is, to be honest with you.
It has a significant.
There is a significant.
It has some topography issues as well.
Okay, well, that's my next question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. If we could have the applicant come forward.
Logan.
Hello. Just name and addresses for the record.
My name is Adam Hughes, and our business address is 34 South, 600 East, Salt Lake City.
My name's Jake Bird. I'm with Lotus, 34 South, 600 East, Salt Lake City.
Great. What information would you like to give the commission about your request?
So we previously appeared before the planning commission on September 5th, requesting RM25 across those two properties. The first property being the 2.93-acre parcel, the site of the business park, and the other being a one-acre parcel zoned R18. The concerns that were raised by this body was that the density was too high, and some concerns raised by the neighbors weren't preserving the environment, the traffic impact and power infrastructure. Many on this body had indicated that they would be supportive of a rezone request if it were at a lower density of RM15. With this revised application, we are proposing a solution that addresses each of the issues raised by this body and by many of the neighbors. So first, we'd like to address the traffic concerns that were raised by the neighbors. We commissioned a traffic study from Reeve and Associates, an engineering firm. While the full traffic study will be completed within the next week, which we can share with the city and the neighbors. When completed, we have with us a traffic generation letter from Reeve that analyzes the traffic by land use and compares the traffic generation from the existing office buildings to the traffic that will be generated by the townhome redevelopment. Their analysis shows that lower traffic would be experienced from a townhome redevelopment, about, by about half. We've got copies of that available as well. I'm not sure if you have received copies of that. Okay. Second, we'd like to address the power infrastructure concern regarding energy consumption that one of the neighbors raised, because they've experienced blackouts. The current office buildings are quite old and inefficient. The average energy usage for a standard office building is about 17 kilowatt-hours per square foot per year. And given the inefficiency of the existing buildings, they are consuming more than average. At 46,088 square feet, using the average consumption, the current office space consumes around 783,496 kilowatt-hours per year. In contrast, the townhomes we're proposing, with an average size of 1,600 square feet, would be built to current energy standards, consuming approximately five kilowatts per, kilowatt-hours per square foot annually. This would total 512,000 kilowatt-hours per year, which is significantly less than the current office complex. In addition, since the meeting on September 5th, Jake Bird here visited with many of the neighbors directly adjacent to the property at the home of Mr. Rob Benedict. If you recall, Mr. Benedict had appeared here to voice his concern for the project in having high-density residential approved next to his home at the R18. We offered a compromise to Mr. Benedict and his neighbors in attendance that in exchange for removing the R18 property from the application for a rezone, that they would support the RM25 rezone on the GO property. This was received favorably by all of the neighbors in attendance. In terms of the R18 property, it is virtually impossible to subdivide it under the existing R18 zoning. A subdivision would require a 49-foot right-of-way off of 5,800, 4,800 through the property. With setback requirements, this would result in insufficient lot sizes to accommodate 8,000-square-foot lots, which we've confirmed with Mr. Smallwood. So by removing the R18 property from the rezone, it virtually guarantees that the property will not be subdivided, eliminating the opportunity for redevelopment on the site and satisfying the concerns of the neighbors who are concerned about preserving the environment on the R18 site. So what you have before you is a rezone for the GO property comprised of 2.93 acres. Under the rezone, we would only be able to achieve 22 units an acre on the property as we would not qualify for any of the bonus density requirements that permit higher density. So at 22 units an acre on 2.93 acres, we are at a total of 64 units. Taking into consideration the withdrawal of the one-acre R18 property from the application, which, as I've mentioned above, is before, is functionally indivisible, what we are proposing results in a blended density of 64 units across four acres. This yields a density per acre of only 16. This resulting density is less than Miller Estates, which is located to the southeast of the site and has 294 units on 15 acres, resulting in a density of 20 units an acre. While what we're proposing is only one more unit than the RM15 zone that this body has indicated they would support and recommend to City Council, we feel like this is a good compromise and results in a project that is compatible with surrounding land uses and that we have adequately addressed the concerns of the neighbors.
Great. Any questions for the applicant?
What was your last comment there about, I thought you said something about RM15?
So one of the comments from some members of the body last time we presented in September was that if we had come forward with an RM15 request, that it would have been looked upon more favorably than the RM25, RM15 on those four acres, essentially. So that's what we're referring to.
And the four acres, including the piece that you.
Including the R18.
But I think to further, you said that you would be getting 16 units per acre, right?
Under, yeah, if, if you look at the entire four acres, if we're only doing 64 on three, that's the same as 16 acres on four.
But I don't know how we consider that if you're not including that other parcel as part of the rezone.
So it, because they own both pieces of property, so, yeah, it wouldn't be, it, I guess you, that would be at the project level. So you really should be just considering just the.
When you're.
No, I think I get what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying, Zach, and I understand the reasons. But again, we can only look at it based on this parcel and.
Correct.
What they want to do for that zoning.
Correct.
Not that they might include that other 1-point-whatever acres it is.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like, for clarification, could you go back to the map? So in the initial proposal, this strip over here, whoa, wow, wow. Maybe that yellow.
Oh, you want the yellow one? Okay, you want the zoning.
So in the original proposal, this yellow strip here was part of it. But they're saying they're not going to develop it. But today, it is part of the rezoning or no? It is not part of the rezoning?
It is not part of the rezoning, but they already own both parcels.
They own both. This will stay R18. This is in question. I mean, no, this will stay, yeah, stay R18. This is in question.
That's the one that you're reviewing today.
So all we're discussing is the 3-point, the 2.93 acres.
Yeah, 2.93.
So it's a legitimate question to ask. Why did you not include this, that portion again at a different zoning density?
Like an RM20 or something?
Well, an RM15 or an RM20 or something.
Because the main concern of the neighbors is having any development along that R18. And what we had originally proposed was with RM25, moving the density over into the GO. So while we would get the rezone, we would do a density transfer essentially over to the GO. Now, that's not considered by this body, because you don't look at it at the project level, only at the rezone. But for us to address the concerns of the neighbors and receive their support, that's why we pulled the R18, was to address their concerns and maintain that property in the R18 zone.
As I said before, and I'll say again later, I'm in a huge quagmire, and I'll explain more details later. But part of it, also, I'm always uncomfortable when the developer tells me what the neighbors think. I just don't, I don't, I like you guys, I like your project. I'll talk more about that later. But I think we should take the neighbor's opinion and your opinion and not mix the two, because I don't know what the neighbors think. They're not here. I don't know. Although, I respect you guys, but.
So can.
I'm looking at what's right across the street is that other apartment complex. So I'm not sure the neighbors have a really. I think this kind of a development is an obvious choice for that property.
So.
I think the question in my mind just goes back to that density and why we're ending up with that high-density in this situation.
I guess it'd be more appropriate to wait till the discussion point, but.
Yeah, I mean, unless you have further questions for the applicant.
But I have a comment along those lines as well.
Can you read the part that you said one more time? That last section that you said, if it had been on the four acres at RM25.
This project would equal 16 units per acre, but it's not.
Yeah, so taking into consideration the fact that we withdrew the one acre of the R18 and looking at the entire four acres and what the density would be across four acres, which is how we look at it, I know that's not how you guys look at it, but that's how we look at it as a developer. We're only getting 16 units an acre across these two parcels.
Across these two parcels, but you're only rezoning.
Only rezoning the one.
One parcel.
Right.
Okay.
Trying to, excuse me, trying to take what they just saying there, looking at staff, had they continued with the four acres and zoned it as a lower-density zone that would give them 64 units?
We're not looking at a project tonight, we're looking at zoning.
I know, but we're looking at, no, but 64 units is how many units you can put on 2.93 acres at RM25.
Okay.
Okay. Could I put 64 units on four acres at a different zoning density? Or a different zoning specification?
I'm trying to think of a way to say this.
If it was RM15, it would be 45 max. If it was RM20, it would probably be 60 max. But then you have Putnam Road and.
Sure. I think the, I think what the applicant is trying to express is that the resident, the residents that have come out every single time, and this is on the record on the minutes, I feel comfortable in saying this, is that they do not like anything happening on that R18 piece. That was the entire, that was their comment every single time. And so that's why they took the approach they did, instead of bringing it back as a lower density for the whole thing. Yeah.
But that's exactly what concerns me, because we're not looking at a project, we're looking at a zone change.
Correct, but the density still matters.
Yeah, so if they have a wonderful project, which I like, but then they can't develop it, and someone else buys it, and now it's a GO and they can do other things. We're not looking at a project, we're looking at a zone change.
Right. So I mean, either way, it would be, right. So, yeah.
You still have an answer to my question.
And really, I don't have an answer for you, because it's, what we're doing here tonight is looking at this application. Speculating on what could be or couldn't be, I don't know.
Well, but I'm looking for information that's trying to help me decide on this application.
Okay.
I guess also, maybe the applicant could explain that you had applied for RM15.
And it was denied.
Previously, right? And.
Across all four acres.
Right.
You had applied for RM15.
Yes.
Two years ago.
And the planning commission voted it forward, right?
Voted, denied, mostly.
And the City Council denied it. So they have gone through the process of applying for a lower-density.
And it was denied by City Council because of some of the concerns that the neighbors had raised directly to City Council. So we're here. So what we're here before this body trying to accomplish is we have an old, functionally obsolete business park that is failing. We need to find a solution to redevelop it or it's going to become blighted and you're going to see crime increase in this neighborhood just as a result. We think we've met the neighbors' needs and desires. We think this is a great compromise and accomplishes what's needed to be done. There are limitations in the way that your code is written, which is really a blunt tool. I wish there was more finesse that we could work through with other communities. We do development agreements where the project, the rezone application, the general land use amendment are all presented concurrently and all approved concurrently. The projects looked at, the rezones looked at, the general land use amendment is all looked at within context. So you're at a disadvantage because you can only look at the zone.
I mean, I understand.
You can't look at the project.
I can understand the benefit at times with that, but I also understand why it's a disadvantage because we have people that present a project then leave and then something else is built there because we've approved the zone, so.
How often does that happen?
It's happened.
All the time. Projects come here all the time that don't get built.
I just, I was curious.
If something else gets built on that same piece of property where another project was planted.
But some of, some of the things you said are exactly like quad mark. I mean, I, I like your project. I think we should have a variety of housing. We should have variety of incomes and housing for different families. We should have some townhomes and condos. I just frustrated with our city in this process because it should be smaller because to the east of it, the Kmart property, what happened with the Kmart property is that's the property for the reason we had the February moratorium put on that zoning and came back with village mixed use zoning. And at the other end, we have Murray City in which downtown area in which we're going to have high density as well. So it makes sense to stop at some point and stop increasing the density along this road because it's residential community. But I, so I think residential there is perfect, I think, but I just wish we had, as a city, participated with each other better and the R M ten or R M fifteen had been approved. Again, because we're looking at zoning, not a project, because you guys are great and the products you produce are great. It's not against you, but it's, we zone it large and it could be large.
I think that's one of the reasons we wanted to present the, the traffic generation letter because the traffic generation letter shows a much lower intensity by redeveloping the site into townhomes. Roughly about half of the traffic generation would be reduced.
I, I will say something strange to say it needs explanation. The, the traffic isn't really my focus because I've learned beyond the commission, traffic never denies a project. All we do with traffic studies are to determine how we can adjust for the traffic we're creating. I've never seen a project deny on traffic. I sometimes wish that's how it worked. But I don't know.
How long ago did you present this as, the full four acres as R M fifteen?
Two years ago.
June, June twenty twenty two.
Since that time, we've been working on transitioning all of the tenants to month to month leases because the building is at the end of its economic life. We've done public outreach to the neighborhood. We've met with city administration. We've met with city council members. You know, this is the result of, you know, close to two years worth of work on trying to find a solution for this property. We've owned this since two thousand and sixteen.
Wow.
Any other questions?
And I guess those things you just stated are why you think you're optimistic if it goes to the city council again that they will approve it?
Yes, because we feel like we've addressed all of the neighborhood, all of the concerns of the neighbors.
And just because I feel like it's my job to think of both sides. I, I do think this is a good place to put townhomes or condos. It would be something I'd be interested in looking at purchasing. But I, I, like, I, I'm troubled by the suggestion that you couldn't put houses on it because just further down the street, the March Family Farm put seven large scale houses on that size of property.
And what was there before?
A, a field.
Okay, that's why, because they bought raw land. We bought a business park.
So the expense of demolishing it adds up, so it wouldn't pencil out?
So we paid a multiple of cash flow on this property because it was a business that was producing cash flow. So our purchase price for this property was a multiple of cash flow. So it's going to be substantially higher than what a purchase price would be for raw land because raw land doesn't produce anything.
But it's higher because you can make money off the tenants.
Um, yeah, but I mean, this building is close to fifty years old.
So the demolitions will cost you more, is what you're saying.
Well, no, what I'm saying is that the reason why single family is supported on raw land is because the purchase price for raw land is much lower, right? So you don't need density in order for the economics to work. You can have wide open quarter, one third acre lots if you're buying raw land. You don't need to pack density in there. When you buy a project like this at a premium because it's producing cash flow, the economics require that you put density on it. It's land use economics.
Okay, thank you for that, to the applicant. I would like to open this application for public comment. Zach, I think we got some public comments, right? Okay.
Sorry, I'm just pulling it back up. So this one is from Cindy Paulson. Dear Murray Planning Commission, I wish I could address you tonight when you consider the renewed application of the Lotus Development Organization to rezone the property located at eight twenty five to eight sixty five east forty eight hundred south. I cannot attend because I am preparing to travel out of town for my son's wedding. I was invited to a meeting with Lotus and members of the community at four P M on October tenth, two thousand and twenty four for a meeting to be held at seven P M that same date. As you can imagine, I did not attend that meeting due to lack of notice. However, I am open to further discussion of proposed changes to the Lotus Plan at a future date. I am even willing to help organize neighbors to attend. I am irked by the fact that the Lotus Company got my personal email information from Murray City. That should not have happened and I believe it was an invasion of privacy and a release of personally identifying information. I also feel that the planning commission staff misrepresented the facts as far as the condition of the property at the last planning commission hearing. There are no unhoused persons in the area and the staffer who raised this homelessness concern was at a minimum disingenuous. I understand that the Lotus Development has represented they intend to make some compromises to better serve the community, reduce traffic and maintain green space. I would like to know what data or studies the planning commission will have before them when they make this decision. My primary concerns are the following. One, preservation of the mature trees and wildlife in the area. Two, traffic control, forty eight hundred south and Van Winkle. Three, infrastructure. I don't think Murray City Power can support the current load on power. Sorry, I just said power twice. You may not be aware of this, but we have experienced multiple power outages since the opening of the Royce. These events have occurred during the summer and as recently as this week. Four, school bus stop located at Pine Hill Drive adjacent to the proposed development. It is my intention to submit grandma requests for the number of accidents on Van Winkle Expressway from forty eight hundred south to sixty four hundred south since the opening of the Royce. I also intend to submit grandma requests to Murray City Power and or Murray City to see how many power outages we have had this year compared to the last two years. I contend that the consistent building of massive apartment complexes has put an undue burden on Murray City infrastructure. Murray City used to proclaim itself as Tree City, U S A. We have become mega high residential apartment city, U S A. You may not be aware of the fact that Murray small business owners have had their business license fees increased by three hundred dollars just a few weeks ago. Your duty as planning commission is to preserve the quality of life for Murray City residents. Do not cater to deep pocket developers. I urge you to review data on preservation of the wildlife on the creek, traffic congestion and power supply before agreeing to rezone this property to a high density multifamily zone. I appreciate your time and consideration. Cynthia and Scott Paulson, representing William and Jacqueline Stonebreaker.
The other comment we have is from Robert M. Benedict. I am sorry that I cannot be there in person today, but I am traveling. Thank you for reading this out for me. When this project first came before the planning commission, I argued against changing the zone on former Larson property to allow the property to serve as a buffer between the higher density housing and the existing neighbors. This is now the third time the project is in front of the commission and I am very pleased to see the land will remain single family. The commission's job is a difficult one in weighing all the competing interests, the quality of life of the existing neighbors, the economic interests of the developer. The commission and the city council have their own perspectives and interests. I do think this current plan is the best possible outcome. Hopefully for Lotus, the development makes economic sense and the neighbors have a reasonable buffer. I have had extensive discussions with Lotus about the project. While I am sure Lotus would prefer to maximize the value of their project, they have approached our discussions with the best intentions and sincerity. I felt a real desire by Lotus to take into account the views of the existing neighbors. When this project first came before the planning commission, my neighbor Doug Jensen spoke against it and quote the Joni Mitchell song, "They paved paradise to put up a parking lot." Why not? They paved paradise to put up a parking lot. I am beyond thrilled that Lotus is proposing a development that will preserve paradise. Thank you very much, Rob Benedict.
And that's all we've received.
Okay, um, seeing no other public comments, I'll close the public comment period and bring it back for discussion or motion.
Can I just ask a question about the boundaries? Just because I want to make sure I understand. The, the outlined, outlined area is the zone change and is the, what's the blue above that?
Uh, that's, that's another piece of property that's owned by Salt Lake City.
I see. So it would be G O, that would stay G O.
Right.
This would go to R M twenty five.
Yeah, so that, that is owned specifically by Salt Lake City for their water lines. They don't really have any interest in developing or doing really anything with that property. I believe, I believe this one, this one, and this one are all owned by Salt Lake City.
Okay, thank you.
So Zach, because of the two point three acres, at R M twenty five, it doesn't matter who developed it, would only be able to get sixty four units. Is that right?
Let me just, I, I, I I want to do my own calculation before I say yes or no. Yeah, sixty four point four six. So yeah, sixty four, no matter what.
No matter what, they wouldn't be able to get the twenty five?
The only way they could get up to twenty five units per acre is if they do what's called the residential infill, or sorry, residential density bonus, which is a section of the code that has not been utilized to the state in, in decades because it requires so much.
And he kind of spoke about like the challenges to doing that and why that wouldn't be a.
I believe to get three, the three additional units per acre, I think like a, a significant, a large percentage of the development must have like an affordability component. A percentage of it restricted to, I believe, sixty percent A M I, so area median income in order to get that incentive.
And so to do like a R M fifteen, we'd be at forty five units? Ish?
Say that.
What would it, if it had passed as an R M fifteen, how many?
On the four?
Well, I mean, even now on the three, right?
Okay, yeah, so on that, it would be thirty five.
Thirty five, so we're.
Two point nine three.
Well, yeah, what about the four?
Forty seven.
Forty seven.
So.
They would actually get more. One more.
Right, before, their application before, say the city council had passed it, they would have gotten one more.
What's the notice area again?
Uh, four hundred.
Four hundred?
Feet, yeah, we sent eighty seven.
I'm sorry, what, what was that? What was the question in the?
The notice, so what the distance area was for the notice. So we take, we take the boundary line of the property and then we do a, a, a buffer that extends out from the property four hundred feet and that's who we notice, send public notices to on top of posting it on the state website and on the city website.
So, so everybody that lives close to this property got a notice about tonight's meeting?
Correct.
And their other meeting.
And every other meeting, yes. Yeah, I was trying to look up, I was trying to look up how many comments were done in the very first one.
Yes, I was gonna say, I was, I was here when they came before and there were a lot more comments, a lot, yeah.
It could be that they're happy with this new proposal. It could be that they're exhausted.
That's what I was gonna say. I, I do think the multiple applications, they just maybe get burned out and I don't know, I don't know. But I, I mean, I personally am feeling like I, I want to commend the developer, I think, listening, taking out from the first meeting, a lot of the comments were save those trees. They were adamant about that. So, so taking the one acre out, giving a buffer to that neighborhood, I commend you, I think, good job. I love that. I mean, I expressed my frustration at the last meeting with the city council for denying because I feel like they were so short sighted in not wanting an R M fifteen. They couldn't foresee that what would then be needed to make a project work would be higher density. And I expressed this last meeting, I, you know, I think it's, it's really a shame that they, that they, they, they denied that. I, I personally would, even with this acre out, wish that this was an R M fifteen application, which it's not.
Can we have a little bit more discussion about saving paradise? I'm just not convinced. I appreciate what they're trying to do. They're trying to meet us halfway because I do feel like we messed up by not, the city council not approving it when it was R M fifteen. So they took out that one acre and so that it won't be part of this condo development. But I don't foresee it staying a tree lot forever. They still own it and they're going to flatten it out, make a parking lot or clean it up and make it a, you know, just because it's not.
Well, there's things in the ordinance about what they could do, right?
Yeah, and, and they can still incorporate elements of this into their project. They could incorporate it into their project as potential green space or anything else. I know that their intention is to, again, this isn't, this isn't a project and it's, and we're not even talking about that specific piece of land. We're only really considering this one. But from what they, they've expressed to me is that they, they plan to keep the home that's on the R one eight piece.
Okay, don't, don't sell it to us, and then based on a, a project.
No, but to Lisa's point, if they decided to come back and they wanted to do something with this property, that doesn't mean that that would get rezoned as R one, as something other than R one eight, right?
Well, it's part of my quad mark because I don't want to talk about a project, but we keep acting as if we saved paradise when we don't know if we saved paradise.
But they would have to go through that process to rezone that one property. Doesn't mean that they would get it zoned different than R one eight. I mean, I think it's pretty clear that.
They'll come back and be zoned G O, G O and put the garbage dumpster there.
Even at staff level, they might not say this is an appropriate place to have.
Right now, they could go cut down all those trees.
Today.
What we're doing is not saving paradise. They could go cut them all down tomorrow.
But for them to redevelop it in a different way, they, they would have to go through this process again to do something that's not R one eight on that acre.
If this came in either with the two point nine three acres or the four acres, I wasn't involved before, at R M fifteen, it, it would be a no brainer for me to say yes. Jumping up to the R twenty five, kind of going back with the same logic we had on the previous item. It jumps up, it, it, we're spot zoning and we're looking at the character of the neighborhood and I'm not sure that that goes along with either of those things.
So I.
To go to, to go to R M, to go to whatever it is, R twenty five.
So I would say that's why I specifically put in the staff report why Miller Estates is different. Because you can look at a color on a map and yeah, it doesn't match. But how the place is actually working is different. Right?
I, I agree. I think what you're saying, Zach, is, is right. I think if we look at the other property, which, you know, we, I mean, these are apples and oranges really. But if we look at the other property, for me, it's, it's a property rights thing and here's what I look at. For me, I look at, you know, this property owner wants to do something. Is he infringing on other people somehow? And on the other case, I think he was because he was, he was infringing on what these people expected their land to be around them. And I think if we rezone that, then, you know, it was out of character. And I think if we rezone that, then, you know, it was out of character for that area and it would affect those people. And here is the same thing, it's going to affect those people, but we have nobody that came here and told us that they're unhappy with this new proposal. If we did, I would be out. And if this wasn't RM 15, I would be in, 100%. And so RM 25 is hard, but-
I think you articulated-
But we have, the road isn't going to be worse, we already have that. The power isn't going to be worse, we have that in the report. In fact, it probably will help the area when we have a new development, so I'm not, I don't know. That's just my, I'm just saying, I'm just saying my thinking out loud.
I'm looking at more of the idea that we're spot zoning something that, maybe this is the wrong way to look at it, that's taking at least two steps up in density.
Well, it's not right next to its RM 15.
Well, but, okay, that's part of my question.
So that's one, is there an RM 20?
I don't know-
I guess it is two steps, sorry.
Why across the street, it's zoned RM 10, but you're saying it's actually more like RM 20?
Yeah, based on the number of units in the acreage, it is running at RM 20.
At 20?
I'd have to double check, I think that's what I said.
Do you have the future land use of this?
There you go.
Was office, so the future land use was still office. But I do feel like there's an argument to me that when this general plan was written, that you couldn't foresee that a lot of future land use of office would be higher density residential.
If this was zoned agriculture-
Right.
Then I would have a completely different opinion.
But I do think that the next general plan that will be written, and maybe we'll update our ordinances and make the process, you know, less of a blockaded structure. But the next general plan, I think a lot of office would be future land used, either mixed use, high-density residential.
If you look specifically across Van Winkle, you can see the dark blue across the street. That's actually future land used for professional office. It says that the commercial will go away, the retail will go away to professional office. That will not happen at this time. Professional office is outside of very specific areas, is dead. It's not coming back anytime soon.
Right, so that's my point, so when this general plan was written-
We anticipated-
Right, we couldn't foresee that we now are however many years later, like seven or?
Again, I apologize, what did you say about the dark blue across the street?
Yeah, the dark blue across the street, if you look on the future land use map legend, it's designated as professional office. So, you know, if somebody were to come in for a rezone to be in line with that, we would recommend the professional office zone. And we couldn't have expected, I don't anticipate, there's only been one property in this city that has rezoned to professional office and that was in 2019, and now it's up for sale. And-
Then across the street, no, it's commercial.
Another plan that never came to fruition.
That was approved, but didn't, I think I know what property that is too.
You sure do.
I, I- Again, I would-
Across the street is in Murray. But let me also, let me clarify, because I just looked in the staff report to make sure. So Miller Estates is running, has 15 acres, has 294 residential units. That comes out to 20 units per acre. Based on the current zoning, as we allow right now, it would be actually, it would be required to be in the RM 25, not the RM 20. The RM 20 only allows 17 units per acre as a base density.
And it has 20.
It's running, it is operating at 20 units per acre.
It feels, I do, I will say, it feels like it's not that dense because it has so much open space and stuff, you know, the feel of it is not as dense as it actually is.
If the Murray City Council denied it at R15, why wouldn't they deny this one?
He feels like he's met the concerns by taking that one acre.
I think he's met the concerns.
I mean, it's an argument he can make, but I do feel like it's a hard jump ticket.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't speak for the city council on what they will or will not do.
Yeah, and that's probably not the right question, but I-
No, go.
No, I just-
I think we forward whatever recommendation we think we should do, regardless of what they are gonna do.
Yeah, no, I agree, and my comment really is, I think it's a great compromise. I think Jake articulated it well, comparison to the previous project, the difference. It's been going on for a while, I think we need it to move on. And so I think it's a great compromise, and we know the issues from the past and why the city council didn't approve it at R15, and that's my-
But let's hope that the city council, when they review these minutes, will recognize that future land use designations of office are not going to stay office. So I think that that should very much be taken into consideration and it should have been considered when this was an RM 15 application as well.
I think this is, this kind of a use for this particular property is probably the, one of the best uses for it. Sometimes I'm not real thrilled about higher-density housing, but in my opinion, that seems like the obvious choice for this piece of property. Even though I have some trepidation about it, I would like to make a motion that we-
Wait, can we discuss just one more time? I just have one more discussion before you make a motion.
Okay, I thought we were, I thought there was a lull, so I thought we were-
Sorry, just one, just because I want to figure it out. Someone do the math with me, I think 294 units and 15 acres is actually RM 20, it's 20 units per acre.
Well, but you can't actually put 20 units per acre.
So unless it meets certain criteria-
I'm talking about the Miller Estates across the way.
Exactly, it would not meet the requirements under the RM 20 to get the additional densities.
Unless you do those special things he was talking about.
The base density of every zone is three less than the-
Oh, I see what you're saying, because it's 28 units per acre, it would have to be qualified for 25 if it was less than that, gotcha. Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted, thank you, okay.
I read through that today.
Okay.
That's why I want to get rid of the way that those are written. Like, I'd rather them just be what they are, instead of going three less than everything. But that's neither here nor there.
Well, and it brings up a greater point that even, you know, the public expressed today that having all of the pieces of redeveloping a project gets everybody more on board of what that project's gonna look like, right? So I, you know, you don't have to then be doing math about like what actually the density would be and all that kind of stuff, so. Is there a motion?
I wish we had the option of making zoning changes with a time limit on them. Yes, even though it's with some trepidation, I still am going to move that we approve to, send or forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendments to the future land use map, redesignating the property located at 825 to 865 East, 4800 South, from office to our high-density residential.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Richard's?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Henry and a second by Commissioner Richards to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for their requested amendment to the future land use map, redesignating the property located at 825 through 865 East, 4800 South, from office to high-density residential. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, we can take a vote.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkevich?
Same quad mark, I hate, I think the density's too large, I like the project. I'm trusting you to do the project, yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Who?
You.
Hacker. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Arista?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. Okay, our next item, and then the Murray City zoning map.
Oh.
Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion for this one also, that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the zoning map, designation of the property located at 825 to 865 East, 4800 South, from GO, general office, to RM 25, multiple-family high-density residential.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Henry and a second by Commissioner Pearson to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for their requested amendment to the zoning map designation of their property located at 825 through 865 East, 4800 South, from GO, general office, to RM 25, multiple-family high-density residential. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Okay, Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkevich?
Same statement, I wish it was smaller, we've been round and round with this, but you're working to make it look more like RM 15, RM 20, so if you stick to your word, yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Arista?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Good luck with the city council, yes. Okay, well, congratulations, hope the next steps go good. Can we maybe take a five-minute recess before we do short-term rentals?
You are more than welcome to do that.
Good, okay.
I don't know if we have to-
We're, and recess, you have a vote on it?
You say it, yeah.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
So when we received.
Operating.
So when we received the demo in early September, um, it was, I believe, a hundred and fifty um that were operating in Murray.
Oh, so much smaller than I thought it was going to be.
Well, you also have to take into account that is in early, uh, it was actually mid-September probably. Um, that's not a great time to travel.
Wait, 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 we're talking about all of this for a hundred and fifty Airbnb's in the entire city.
Yeah, but we.
Uh, during that week, during that week that they pulled.
I don't think we're talking about them for the hundred and fifty, we're talking about it for everybody else that could be doing it, but is following the law.
Well, they, uh, everyone right now is following the law because there is no law.
Well.
Technically, uh, technically, all one hundred and fifty of them were not, uh, were not.
And all of those are hosted sharing?
I have no idea.
No, because there is no ordinance about what they could do.
The demo just showed us what they were. Um, because it was the demo of the software that we ended up purchasing. Um, it just showed us what they were using. Uh, it's called, uh, Host Compliance by Granicus.
I, I think somewhere in our discussion, we need to, I don't know if I'll do this justice, but try to summarize some of the in-depth discussion we've had in the past on this topic. And my oversimplification is, you know, I have a female friend whose husband passed away and she's not in our Murray, she's in Salt Lake. But she's rented out her basement, she's rented out rooms upstairs, she's rented out her garage to other women, she has like four different women living to help cover the mortgage. And I want her to be able to do that, and that's a good use of housing, but it's short-term rentals part of a different, yeah. Okay, so some of it's short-term rental, it's a good income revenue for her. On the other far side, there are some places that maybe aren't Murray, but we still need to be aware of, like New Orleans, where a company has come in and bought houses on both sides of the street for three streets and it is a party non-stop. The people on the other side of the streets afraid for the, you know, the school district has fallen apart, income from public, you know, the, the tax dollars spent on what ac- aspects of public life haven't been allocated because this company doesn't vote in favor of that, they own the majority vote, you know? So that's the other e- extreme end of this, so we need to be aware of both ends, right? In this discussion, I mean, I just say that because I don't know if wherever we keep neglecting, not yet, but I feel like we're not thinking of the negatives to the extent they could.
I'm not saying there should be no regulation, I think we should be regulated. I actually am shocked at how low the number is because I, I don't think that we're having a huge impact on the city now, more, maybe more people do that, we don't want them buying up houses, I get that, we, we want to have some kind of regulation, but and we'll go through more things, I feel like this short-term rental tax amendment is so punitive that even with no rules, there's only a hundred and fifty, I, I, I mean, I don't know how anyone.
Look at that in November.
Qualifies, uh, how does anyone qualify for a permit on this, on these rules? This is basically saying, which I think is unfair, no one uh, 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 can, uh, it's just such a high threshold that you'd have to.
It is a very high threshold, I'm not going to lie, but I think at this point, we, uh, we needed to start somewhere. Um, because we are within this, this, the six-month timeframe, right?
Right, but right, right now, we're not having issues with a hundred and fifty that we already have, and if we do, it, it gets reported to the police, who also would be the court enforcement people? Like, we're not, we're, we're solving a problem I don't necessarily know if we have, but anyway, sorry.
Preventive medicine is always better than.
I agree, I'm not saying we don't need regulations, I'm not saying we don't need to have an ordinance right now as it is, anyone can o- operate uh Airbnb because there is no ordinance to enforce.
Right.
Uh, uh, way to not.
But I think the point you're making maybe goes back to something I said earlier, uh, about maybe we're being a little too conservative uh, on the way we're writing this.
And, and.
I mean, if we're, if, because there's not a huge problem here, we're trying to.
Right, what, what, I understand that you're writing this at the discretion of the city council. But it, the other, we can make changes, the other option though is that we start somewhere and we add regulations based on how many problems we run into and have, right? Why start at the other end?
And I think that's just a, 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 a difference of opinion between the city council and the planning commission.
Right.
Um, in, in how they want to approach it.
When you start on the, the broad end, is that what you're talking about? It's gonna be a lot harder to pull things back.
So that.
If it gets too out of.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker.
However, I believe you, this is pretty conservative.
So that actually brings up a good point. Um, and I didn't really want to get into it too much, um, and therefore I didn't bring it up a lot. But, so I'm going to do it with hopefully not opening a ton of can, a, a big can of worms. But of those hundred and fifty that were operating, um, it's been determined by legal counsel, outside legal counsel that those are all now grandfathered in and are, um, allowed to continue for all time.
But, but you said you don't even know the nature of what those are.
But I will know.
So I'm not sure how it's relevant.
I, I, I will know, like I said, the demo, the person that was selling me, let me, let me finish, please, let me finish. The person that was demoing the, the product to sell me was telling me, yes, you can know what this is once you buy this product, then I will know, but I don't have access to that product yet because I literally just charged the credit card on Tuesday.
Yeah, but I think the point was, you said it's grandfathered in, is it, when you say that, do you mean it's grandfathered in no matter what it is, or it's grandfathered in if it meets this?
Nope, whatever.
As they're operating currently, so they've been operating without an ordinance, so there's no enforcement mechanism, so they can continue to operate with no, they don't have to come in line with.
Shh, don't say that on the record, because then everyone else is gonna jump on real quick.
I mean, it doesn't matter much, it's a hundred and fifty houses.
It doesn't matter much, but, right.
I mean, I don't know.
What, what does it matter much?
The grandfathering of these houses, I think, is irrelevant to us doing what we're doing.
Short-term rentals they are is relevant because it speaks to what we ought to be regulating.
Well, and it could matter because if I had money and I was sitting here now, and I know the Olympics are coming in thirty-four, boy, I'm buying me two streets. Right now, if I had that kind of money, I don't have that kind of money, but we've just said on public record, if you buy it now, it's grandfathered in, doesn't matter, so I'm running now.
It was technically, it was technically on public record in the city council too, so, um.
Hey, you gotta, you just gotta close before January.
Because you know Murray's hot, probably in Sugar House doing that.
Okay, let's keep, let's keep going, because, yes, so, I don't even know where I was, parking requirements, okay, we're done. So enforcement, um, each day of oper, so if, if they're found to be operating, um, without a permit or whatever, except for the ones that are non-conforming, um, it, it could lead to a class C misdemeanor. I want to be very clear that, um, that we use the word could very specifically. Um, there are certain laws and things that Mark could, could get into where legalese, we can't say shall be cited as a classy misdemeanor. There's weird things about that, I don't want to get into it, but, um, go ahead.
Why? So each day, so I'm running for a year, you guys come in and you go, hey, you don't have a permit. So for three hundred and sixty-five days, my minimum fine, if I, if I goes to court, and I'm convicted of this, is three hundred and sixty-five times a hundred and ten, that's my minimum fine.
No.
Okay, so tell me.
It's the day we cite.
Oh, it's the day we, so from the day I'm cited and continue to run it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, correct, Mark, oh, wait, wait, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be told different, maybe.
It would be each time you're cited, it could potentially have that fine, so it's potentially a violation for every day you continue to operate. But you're, you have to actually have a citation to have a reason to go to court, so.
So let me just ask my question, I buy my name, I buy my, no, I rent out my basement, short-term rental today. A year from now, the city finds out, I'm, I'm not gonna be fined for three hundred and sixty-five days?
Well, now we're into criminal, I mean, criminal procedure, you have to be able to establish a date and time for any specific violation.
I put it on, I put it on the thing and you guys get it on your software and you know that I've been running a short-term rental for three hundred and sixty-five days. Yeah, but I don't have a permit.
So I guess, I, I don't, I didn't fill it, would it apply in reverse?
So, uh, uh, let me be clear too, i- i- what, what we haven't gotten to yet is what is being proposed today would only potentially apply to new applications, new going forward.
I don't have an application, that's why I'm saying, I didn't fill out an application.
Right, and we'll, I think we'll get to this as we go through the ordinance, there's a permitting process you're supposed to go through.
I didn't do it, though.
Okay, so if we find out there's a violation and code enforcement goes and finds that, you can be issued a citation.
For every day that I was, I did not.
Every day that a prosecutor could prove with evidence that you were in violation.
So what I'm saying is, if I ran for a year, because I posted on Facebook and they can prove it, I would be fined. If I'm convicted of this classy misdemeanor, I would be a hundred and ten dollars times three hundred and sixty-five days, minimum.
No, you're, it starts.
I understand I have to get a citation.
So you can't go post backwards, you could stop on the day you're cited, right?
This is why I'm asking the question, is it from the day I'm cited and I continue to operate, or from the day that they can prove I was operating?
From the day this goes into effect, it would have to, there would have to be evidence to show that you were in violation.
So we pass this tomorrow, city council passes it tomorrow, I run for a year without an application.
A prosecutor has to have a witness that says they testify, they could testify they stayed in your place.
They can find that, I placed, posted on Facebook, right?
That's hearsay, I mean, we can get it, I mean, it's not as easy as you want.
They can prove that I was doing it, right?
You have to find three hundred and sixty-five people to do it, Murray's not gonna do that, because every day you rented a different person, right?
No, 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 well, yeah, I did, but I ran it for a year, I had, I, I, I had it booked the whole time.
But I guess our point is, you could stop, so yes, that would be ridiculous, if I find you three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, that'd be ridiculous, but if I hand you a fine and you stop, then I find you a hundred dollars, get your business license, you're good.
Well, I'm saying that it has this reason, how I read it, if they think I've been running for three hundred and sixty-five days and can prove it, then the minimum fine is a hundred and ten dollars per day. We're putting it in code, right, so it, it, the minimum is that, am I incorrect in saying that?
Let me, let me clarify as well, I put, so the fine is not listed in the code, uh, it just says classy misdemeanor.
So, again, I don't want to get, I don't want to get too, but there's a uniform bail schedule that recommends fines.
Okay.
It recommends for local ordinance classy misdemeanors, a maximum fine could be, I think it's twelve fifty, the recommended fine is a hundred and ten dollars, a judge can do whatever he wants.
Okay, so that, this, this dollar, this dollar amount is based on that, not based on what we want to do.
Right, this is based on the recommend, yes.
So. So in theory, Mark, what I did is actually make it more complicated by asking the question and put it in the slides.
So Jake, is your basement open for rental?
I'm, I'm just saying that, i- is it in code that we're saying that the fine will be per day?
Yes.
No, the code, the code doesn't say what the fine will be per day.
It says that you'll be fined per day.
It's a potential c- classy misdemeanor.
That's all it says, so it doesn't say anything about.
A fine.
I know it doesn't say the amount of the fine, but does it say that they will be fined per day?
They can be cited per day.
Okay.
So that somebody would have to go out every single day and cite every single day.
And we don't have staffing for that.
We do that, I mean, we do that on a lot of zoning, uh, of, of other violations throughout the code, I mean, that any, every day a violation continues, you could be cited for.
But the, when we've, okay, I guess I'll just ask my question, you could just endlessly rack up fines, right, there's no, there's no like action that the city could take if you I guess my question is, in previous conversations, there was ideas of like leans against the house, something that actually could have some kind of teeth in it, I guess, right?
And I think what we've put in the draft is there's, uh, escalations to, to revoking your permit, to, uh, an injunction, to all those different options. You also realize, I think too, i- in this process, uh, we'd obviously be working with them, hey, you've got these violations that are continuing. That's why, again, we've put in there, they may, they, they may be cited daily, the officer has some discretion to, to work it out with them and try to say, look.
Right, but, but if they don't care.
Yeah.
And they're like, I'm, I'm making more than I'm losing in fines, right, they could just keep going forever.
I suppose you could say that about any.
Yes, I mean, a- and that very well could happen, but again, w- we have, we have to find at some point a regulation to, to move forward with, and, um, a- and we just need to make, we have to move forward with something and then evaluate what that, what that ends up being.
Isn't that with anything, though, in the, in the law, like, if I could just, I could just park wherever I want as long as I pay the parking ticket?
Exactly.
Well, and, and the hurdle to, the hurdle to become legal isn't so high that it would make sense to accept the fine. I'm charging two hundred dollars a night, I'm about to pay a hundred and ten dollar fine, so I still make nine dollars, I don't care, well, the hurdle to be legal is a hundred, uh, what's the application cost, you know?
Right, but, I mean, same, I mean, it's the same thing, it's like parking at the U, like, I don't want to pay, I'll pay twenty-five dollars to get the most premium parking and I'll get a fine every day, I don't care. Like, that, it's the exact same type of thing, like, I, I get more benefit out of paying twenty-five dollars to be right outside the door of the building I need to get into than, you know?
Unless the parking stick permits a hundred dollars, you just buy the permit and stop getting the twenty-dollar fine every day.
Right, exactly, I mean, so, really, w- we have to start somewhere, and this is what we're doing, is starting somewhere. I guarantee you, there's going to be changes at, 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 at some level, at some point.
And just throw this out there too, who knows what the legislative session's going to do.
And I, I was gonna get to that, because I don't, uh, the only reason I didn't bring it up is because the last time I brought it up, the council didn't make a decision because they said, well, wait till the state says something. Um, and so, I, I, I have been in, I have been in the i- in the meetings with the interim legislative session, and they, they're going to be bringing it up this year. They've said that every year, but they seem a little bit more serious this year.
Sure, because you got the Olympics coming.
Exactly. Okay, can I continue? Okay, so, um, okay, we hashed out the enforcement, so process to operate an STR, it's a staff-level approval application with a site fan, site plan, floor plan, parking plan, proof of owner occupancy, proof of non-conflict with HOAs, and a business license. Um, so, um, here are the findings, um, they're in your staff report. Um, and so we are recommending that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval, um, for those sections and, um, implementing the new section of the code, and now we can get more into discussion.
Well, can I actually open the public comment portion?
Yeah, if you, if you want to do that.
And then we'll do discussion, I feel like sometimes we get into discussion and then we forget that we've never had a public comment.
Yes, for sure.
So, um, at this time, I would like to open the public comment, um, portion, if anyone wants to make a comment on this item. Do you receive any?
No.
Emails, okay, and I'll close the public comment portion, and now we can have our discussion, now this, don't forget it.
Ask away.
I, I think I'm just gonna, I think for the most part, I think this is, I'm, I was fine with what I read here, I think it's too complicated. I think we should do with the floor plan, we should do away with, we should just make it so simple that they pay if, they, they tell us they're doing it. We don't have to go out and look at it, we don't have to get a floor plan from them, we're just, it's gonna be people drawing up a thing and it's not gonna matter anyway, I think. Um, that's what I think, I think we should simplify it, we're, we're already having some code enforced, I mean, in theory, we would already have code enforcement if this was an issue, which apparently it's not much of an issue, right?
I believe we've had five complaints in three years.
Okay, so it's not much of an issue, so I don't think we should, I think we should try to make it as simple as possible so we're not adding a burden onto the city to, to manage it, that's what I think. My other thing is CED director, I think is spelled out and then, and then, um, and shortened to CED. Like, it's, it's both ways in here, so we should probably make that consistent.
I can clean that up, if, if you guys are okay with administrative changes, clean that up, um, I'm more than happy to do that.
Would you go back to the previous page in your presentation? Whoop, well, again, the one that, that one. I, I don't see anything in here that an unhosted, uh, short-term rental would really be significantly different. I think the idea that we want to prevent party houses and we want people to be, have responsibility and ownership, if they have proof of owner occupancy and they leave for a week or weekend or two, or whatever the limit is for a short-term rental and coming back to their own house, I, I think they're gonna have some responsibility to make sure it's done by, or rented by somebody that's.
How, how would you determine that that's their primary residence?
We, we have that written into code.
That's right.
Into the code, we have it, they have to provide like a utility bill or their driver's license, um, something that shows that they actually live on-site. But to get back, to get back to that point, um, that was originally presented in the twenty-twenty-one code that did allow the unhosed sharing. Um, and there were a few on, on the commission that did have concerns with the unhosed sharing. Um, and then it is also, um, the concern of the city council as well for unhosed sharing. Um, a- and so we are, again, I think we are going really hard on it and restricting it.
I guess I'm trying to come back a little bit to, I think what Jake's position is, at least in a sense is, well, maybe we shouldn't be trying to over-regulate it, we should just have a bare minimum in there so it's not abused and make it as easy as possible for people to do it and not try to restrict it too much coming out of the gate.
So.
Because government regulations, it always seems to me like it's an awful lot harder to pull them back than it is to make them more restrictive.
So.
We would need to make it more restrictive if that's, if you're, you're saying we anticipate there may be changes, let's maybe anticipate that we've got to tighten it up because there is abuse. Not say somehow we're gonna back off because we've overdone it, because I'm not sure what gonna, it would ever drive that.
And I would, I, I would, I would only say that in, in typical things, i- in, in how I how I manage and do things within the city, that's usually the approach I take. However, when it comes to regulations and, and stuff like this, is that, like, uh, Commissioner Hacker had, had mentioned, is that if we have a looser code and then impose stricter things, everything in the looser code is allowed to continue. It wouldn't address the problem of that, of that, of that issue, because it would be grandfathered in.
But Zach, what about the opposite, right, like, what about the people that?
I've got a question for our attorney, is that always the case, can we not restrict something that's going on now? Uh, when we say we, the city?
I'm sorry, Sam, I, I didn't hear the full question.
Uh, Zach's point is, if somebody's doing something allowed by the code now, if we change the code to make it more restrictive, they are automatically grandfathered in to where it is.
Well, yeah, you can't, you can't pass laws retroactively.
Well, I know we can't pass laws that tell people they, what they did in the past can, can be, uh, cited. But from going forward, we can tell them, no, you can't do that anymore.
So non-conformities are.
I'm asking that as a question, not as a statement.
A- a- and I'm, a- a- and I apologize, no offense to Mark.
Go ahead.
He's a great, great attorney, uh, th- this is a land use question, not, it's a land use question is what you're asking. Non-conformity is spelled out in state federal law, that if something was permitted to somebody as a property right and then the city comes in and changes that to disallow it, that person is still entitled to do it. Um, there are, there are levers to pull that are called, uh, amortization that will phase that out. And initially, the city looked at that as an option for amortizing out these existing um, short-term rentals that are operating right now under this loophole, right? Um, but what that resulted in was a probably a management of twelve to fif- fifteen-plus years of monitoring these until they actually came out to, um, deny.
Okay, and I, and I think where I'm coming from on this is I think people ought to have the right to do what they want to with their property as long as it isn't a nuisance. And if that requires amateurizing, amateuric.
I know, I, I have a really hard time saying that word.
Over time, I, I think that's fair, but I, I guess I don't see the distinct difference specifically between hosted and unhosed, it, it's one of my hangups. That, and I, I, I guess while I'm on that same topic, your, your preamble and your purpose here, I don't think we even ought to state that it's to provide economic relief to existing other, uh, owners. It's just because they, it's their property, they ought to be able to do what they want with it, again, as long as it's not a nuisance or doesn't violate like our zoning or whatever else, like we've talked about earlier.
Zach, does it go the other way, like the people that will qualify under this permit, and you've already said, we're gonna be making changes based on whatever? Do you then retroactively notify them, like, oh, hey, we had all these parking requirements and we regulated how many rooms you could rent out, and like, whatever, like, we're not doing that anymore, so you're like, fine, to rent it however you want?
That would be correct, um, that, yeah, they would be able to, um, follow the new ordinance.
I, I'm assuming, I mean, we've discussed if it's too strict or not too strict, and it seems to be on the more strict end, but to the, to your argument, I think the things that they're trying to address with those regulations are things that might potentially be a nuisance, they're not just trying to take away rights, they're trying to regulate news aspects of this to not be considered nuisance.
I can make the argument, I think that it's not perfect, that the, the reasons you want to do hosted versus, or, or prohibit unhosed versus hosted aren't necessarily valid, I, I can understand the non-owner, I'm, I'm down with that completely. Or the, or the non-resident, whatever, whatever the term is.
Because I, because I think it's how we're defining unhosed, meaning, I might think of unhosed as someone that buys this property says they're living there but never really does, has the utility bills because I'm paying all the electricity and utilities, and that's a nuisance because it's a party non-stop.
But, but if we, if they were, I mean, that's why I asked the question, if they were verifying their driver's license, they could only have one property, right? They couldn't, right, they couldn't buy five different properties to do that.
I can own a property here in Wyoming, and my driver's license is the Wyoming property right here.
You could do one in Wyoming and one in Utah.
And I could live here and rent that out.
You're right, you could one, one place, right?
And I understand, I, I just don't want to do a lot of what-ifs.
Yeah.
Because what-ifs get it, get us into a lot of problems, um, where we can, we can always do the what-if game, um, of, you know? A- 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 I think we're trying to regulate something as as much as we can currently, again, with the understanding that we can always pare it back and it will allow for somebody to come back.
That's what I'm saying, because I don't think I'm too worried about, you know, restrictive, because if I want to go out of town next weekend and I have someone in my hosted um, one-night rental that's coming, I could go out of town, no one's gonna report me, I won't be there, I won't be hosted, but it's not what I do twenty-four-seven, it's what I do. It's what I do once in a while, it's okay, it's not gonna be, who's gonna call and report, I don't know, and prove that I wasn't there.
I've got a question for Mark, have many of these cities, others, have you seen any challenges legally to some of these other jurisdictions that are really more active? Have you seen?
So, one of the things that you're seeing is, is short-term rentals have kind of exploded in the last few years. Um, they're becoming more and more popular, they're becoming a bigger thing, so as far as regulations and case law and, and history that, that, that you can rely on, there's not a ton of it. With regards to, uh, the amortization issue that we talked about, Utah has, uh, kind of a, a, a court that has said one thing and, and the ombudsman that has said something else. So, i- the, the problem with these, a- a- as you know, with any land use or zoning law, is it's this tangled web of balancing elements of private property rights with public interest. So, as we have, uh, imposed this moratorium, it, it puts a, a shot clock on us to come up with something, uh, that we, that we have to have in place by January. So as we have looked at this, uh, and as Zach mentioned, we've, we've researched it, we've, we've taken the one that was done in twenty-twenty-one. We've, uh, tweaked it a little and we've run it by, uh, some other land use, uh, outside council that, that focus on land use and, and have come up with, with this proposal, uh, at this point, based on the feedback we've heard from citizens and, and city council and those things. So, there's not a ton of, uh, enforcement and, and regulation to. So there's not a ton of enforcement and regulation to draw on to see how it goes and which way it goes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify my position because I think that I am in agreement with Commissioner Henry that I think the, as long as we're making sure that the homeowner is renting it out, I'm not sure I care much if they're there or not. But I understand why that could be beneficial. If there's an issue, the homeowner's there, if there's an issue and he's not, it's more difficult. And when I was saying we should cut stuff out of this, I think what I'm saying to cut out is stuff that is, it's not making this less, it's not making this weaker, it's making it less burdensome, burdensome on the, on staff.
And I, and I agree, I, I think, I think it is something that we will probably come forward with in the future because it is quite onerous. I mean, you know, like I said, we're, we're investigating, you know, costs that are going to result out of this. And, you know, potential staff, you know, reviewers and, and all of that. So I understand that. I don't necess, I don't disagree that there is a lot in here that we have to manage. But with the understanding that I think we will, within probably exactly a year from now, you'll probably see something, some sort of changes to updates. And, and that's something, if, if you guys want the same thing as the council for us to report back a year after this is implemented, I'm happy to do that. And we can kind of have that discussion and, and plan that out so that we know how it's gone, what's happened. Because we're obviously going to keep track of, you know, how many are actually listed as nonconforming? How many are, have applied? How many, you know, we'll have all that data after this year or from a year from January, we'll have all that information so that we can have a, a better holistic conversation about what may need to change, I think is, is kind of where we're at.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, this is what I think I heard. Is you want us to approve it as it is and we'll clean it up later.
That's pretty much how, it's a starting point. Because like, like we, like, let me, let me finish. After we, like I had mentioned and, and Mr. Richardson mentioned as well, is that we're on a shot clock, right? I only have until, I believe, January 3rd to get this done. And so we've, you know, with everything else that we do as staff, you know, making these presentations, making, dealing with applications and then the attorney's office, we've only had so many, so much time to craft an ordinance. And I think this is where we are at currently. So yes, unfortunately with government, it is pretty much a, we'll take what we have right now and we'll clean up as we can.
None of the things that Commissioner Pearson is suggesting can be done in that deadline.
If, if, if you got, if you as a commission want to make recommendations for that, we can take, yeah, if you want to change things, that's fine. It, it would just require a motion and we would take pen and scribble out things and then we can take that forward with, yeah. But what, what I don't want to happen and, but you are, you are more than welcome, it just tightens my, my timeline a little bit more. Is what I would prefer not to happen is that staff go to make these changes and then bring it back to us. That's what I would prefer not to happen because I can't, I, I don't think I could get things done fast enough to get it done by January 1st. So I would prefer that if we're going to have that conversation, that it happened this evening and that we make those changes now.
Would you be okay with us doing a motion where we were not exactly specific but gave you guidance? Like if we just said, we want to recommend approval of this with the changes of removing unnecessary things like floor plan, blah, 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 blah. Or would you not like that?
I would not like that, just because that could open it up to interpretation.
I think we've studied it enough to really give a quality response.
How about you? We've got the proposal here and we take it back next two weeks. And we come back next meeting with red line proposals.
Yes. So, sorry, let me, let me restate.
First week in November.
Yeah, let me restate what I think you said, is that the commissioners will come back with new red lines, right?
And have a real discussion about the real nuts and bolts of what you presented.
Meaning a just in-depth discussion about the items we want to change. So at the, at the end of the discussion, we will say, strike this, this and this, we'll agree upon it. Or add this, this, and agree upon it.
Yes.
I mean, can we really, like, could we say we want to strike unhosted sharing and that would be allowed?
You, you can, yeah. Or strike the, yeah, whatever section it is that, yeah, so dedicated vacation rentals and unhosted sharing arrangements are prohibited. However, I will say that we didn't, I took out a large section of, of the 2021 ordinance that addressed a lot of the things that were in the unhosted sharing. Like if you guys remember that for the commissioners that were here, like the nameplate, the, the, yeah, the, the, the nameplate thing, the packet for the the shows, like when garbages need to be taken out and city regulations and stuff like that. There was a big, there was a big chunk of stuff that I deleted out of there.
So in order to, if this doesn't get through by January, then we're kind of in a conundrum because we don't have an order in place and it's wild, wild west. So we need to have something in place by the 4th. So as a committee here, we need to maybe openly talk about what items really bother us and which ones, you know, if we can live with a few things and strike floor plan tonight or agree to come back in two weeks and talk about these three things, maybe we could still do it in a timely manner.
If we strike unhosted, is the city council, is that, is that a no-go, like there's no?
I know that that is not, they don't want unhosted allowed. So I, I can, I feel like I can confidently say that they would probably put it back in. Because that was one of the things, we, we sat in that room right there with markers and wrote, you know, what, what should be allowed and what. We were going through each individual zone, like, should this be allowed here? Yes or no, should this be allowed in this zone? And, and we went through pretty in-depth.
So, so this is saying basically it could only be Airbnb because VRBO is only unhosted.
Well, like I had mentioned with the, with the, with the software, there's, there's like 70, at least 70 different platforms. I don't know what all those are. I know like Vacasa or something like that, I think that's what Marriott uses.
But if you have. It's eliminating a lot, right? Like if you have any home share swap, you know, like there's a lot of sites that it's, it's basically saying one by doing it this way.
But you could advertise it unhosted if I had an ADU in the backyard, so they'd be in, no, that would be considered hosted?
ADUs are not allowed writ large.
Basement with its own kitchen, own access, own entrance?
Nope, if you have an, if you have a permitted ADU, it's not allowed anywhere.
To, you couldn't rent that out?
What? No, not yet, you couldn't short-term rental that out.
Perfect short-term rental.
It's, it's the, it's, if you, if you remember when we looked at the short-term rent, if we, when we looked at the ADU code back in August, it, we, we, I took out that definition of a short-term rental and we specifically put it back in. And so, yeah, they are not allowed in ADUs whatsoever, ever.
But I, I guess I was falsely thinking this would be the new definition of short-term rentals because that's like a total page description.
Again, I knew this was coming down the pipe, but it, it was, it, there you go.
I, I think, I would probably be okay voting on it how it sits. I, I think it could be better.
I agree, I think it could be much better.
I think the, I can't even find the, I can't even find where it talks about having the floor plan.
It's in E.
It's in E, okay.
Yeah, E standards and requirement, E and then.
I probably threw E away.
Yeah, it's E number 2B.
Oh, E 2B.
So.
So I mean, that's not going to be that time consuming for the floor plan, I don't think it's necessary. But the thing that is going to be time consuming is nine inspections.
So I mean, that would be done anyway.
Just because of the business license? So if that's going to be done anyway, why do we need to put it in there? If it's going to be done anyway, kill nine.
So let's see. I think.
Will you know any better in two weeks, the nature of the existing 150? Will you ever know?
Yes. Yeah, when I, when I get through the implementation side of the software, I will know.
Here's the changes I, I would suggest. We kill nine altogether, no inspection necessary for doing one with a business license already. And kill two, E two altogether. And just have it say an application, a completed application form provided by the city and payment of all fees. Get rid of the proposed use, we know what the proposed use is, it's a short-term rental. The basic site plan, it's not necessary, I don't think, that, that would be.
I think they're trying to regulate how many rooms and stuff there, you think?
Isn't nine saying annually?
What?
Isn't nine saying an inspection annually?
Yeah, it does say annually, but business licensing does get renewed annually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they don't come out every year. I guarantee they do not.
They can, but they don't. Certain ones do.
Then that seems the right amount of regulation.
Depends on the business, I guess.
Yeah, it does, yeah. So the only concern with that, with removing two entirely, I just don't know what the impact would be, is that in D and E, so only one designated STR or STR area is allowed for dwelling. And then no person or persons may be housed separately and/or apart from the dwelling unit in any tent, trailer, camper, lean-to recreation vehicle or other structure.
Where did you read this read that, I'm sorry?
It's on two D and E, it's on the next page.
I've got the wrong page, I'm sorry. They're all out of order because I don't know what, there's no page numbers.
No, I apologize, that's, that's my bad.
I don't know.
I have to love that, back in the day with Jared, I used to always say, please, please paint it.
I know, that's what happens when I am putting a packet together at the APA conference.
Yeah, okay, I understand what you're saying. I think this would be better with these changes, I, I mean, I don't think, I don't feel that strongly about them. But I think we should make it as simple as possible, but.
That's part of the reason we took out the requirement for like a name plate and, and those other things was because I thought that was onerous for somebody that's just doing hosted sharing anyway. That the person will be on site, so there was no reason to keep like that contact information for the owner.
It's onerous for unhosted sharing.
What?
The, having a name plate, the all.
I know.
Those rules are onerous for, even if there isn't a host on site, because all of the people, maybe, because you don't use Airbnb, it's on use all the time, you're always communicating with the host. There's no, there is no.
What the name plate was for was for a neighbor. Like if there was a problem with the house.
Right, it's so, it's so weird, it's so weird, that's not how.
I do think, I, I mean, I understand, we're, we're not putting the name plate in here, but I understand the police get called because there's a party going on, they get to the house, they have no idea who to contact. I, I understand the idea, but it doesn't matter because it's not there, so.
I agree with you, Jake, that we should make it as simple as we can, but starting to just cut things out here and there without looking kind of at a coordinated downstream effect is, I don't know if it's any, if we're going to end up with kind of a patch or quilt at the end or. It's clear that the council doesn't want these. Very clear. And so.
The city council has reviewed this document as it sits?
I don't, I, I don't think word for word, but in, in the concepts, yes.
All I would say, all I would ask is if we put forward an approval motion that in your meeting with city council, if they're going to change this at all, if we're going to go start changing it, then you, you maybe mention some of the conversations we had.
Oh, for sure.
You know, I have no confidence that they're going to listen to this meeting and listen to what we're talking about right now.
I guess I don't even know if I should say that, in which case, why are we even looking at it?
Which I, I understand, I understand that entirely. You are the land use authority, it's in, it's in the code that you guys.
But they have something in mind that they want. They're not going to take our recommendations and they're putting in something that incentivizes people to not get a permit. And just hope they don't get caught. It makes, I feel like as it's written, it makes no sense to me. So unless there's further discussion.
I don't, I guess I'll just state, I, I don't think I would support or vote to support this as restrictive as it is from both what I've said before about the not allowing unhosted and the things, and trying to make it simpler. I think this is too onerous as it is. The city council doesn't agree with me, that's, they're elected, they have the legislative authority, but if they want my recommendation, it's going to be a little bit more on the side of personal liberty than it is restriction. And I would request either way that you please strike out that allowing STRs as intended to provide economic relief sentence from your purpose in the preamble.
So just like before, it would require a, a, a motion to amend it.
I don't know, I'm, I have.
Not to, not to recommend approval, just to look back at it.
I guess I'm not as strongly opposed to it as some of you are.
I mean, we could do that, we could just not recommend approval and then you'll have to explain why. And then they'll can do whatever they want.
Is that a self-imposed timeline?
What, the, the moratorium, it's, it's, it's a statutory, yeah. 180 days from, from the moratorium is in state code.
I keep listening and I don't know, I don't feel like I'm as opposed to it as some are. And it might be because of other personal experiences, I have a friend here who lives on Salt Lake, she's on the edge of Salt Lake. And they sold their house and moved because the two neighbors behind them and aside became short-term rentals with a hot tub and their kids were out there with beer cans being thrown over and making people in the hot tub all the time because it was a short-term rental. And that was 33rd South. I mean, I say that because in my mind, that's something that happens in New Orleans or the party town, but it was happening here.
But that would be, that would be a short-term rental that would not be allowed if we approved this, right?
Why would it not be allowed?
Because the person has to live in the house. I mean, that's not to say that someone that lives in the house isn't going to allow some naked people to go sit in the hot tub. But I think it, I think there is going to be a lot of control on what happens in a household if the house hold person is at the house.
I, I guess that's why I'm saying I'm not that opposed to this, I think it's a decent starting spot.
I'm also not that opposed to it.
Yeah, I agree. Let's see where it carves.
I'm not opposed to it either. I'm not opposed to it either.
Well, then the people that aren't that opposed to it. Well, then the people that aren't that opposed to it could make a motion, I guess. I don't know.
I mean, I don't think it's perfect, just like you, you said, but.
I hate to nitpick through everything, but I, I guess I'll, I'll make a motion right now if, if nothing else, that you strike the sentence in the purpose that says allowing STRs is intended to provide economic relief to existing property owners who might otherwise be forced to leave a neighborhood, thus promoting and preserving stable and affordable housing in the city. My purpose is that I think it's irrelevant. If you want to make me have to do it that way, that's what I'll do.
Is there a second on that motion? Seeing done? No. Okay. Motion fails.
I, I, Commissioner Henry, I agree. I agree with what you're saying. I was very close to seconding it. I agree. This is, this is not necessary to be in there, but I I don't think it matters that much. I guess that's why I didn't second it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we talk about the motions more?
The reason that I bring that up is it, is it, we're trying to read into their things that are irrelevant to the law, to the regulation. And I think we're trying to also sound virtuous in the process. If, if, if this is worth doing, it's worth doing it on its own merits, not trying to justify it within the law itself. Or within the regulation, the ordinance.
But then the following sentence is along the same vein. This section also intends to stabilize neighborhoods by promoting homeownership and preserving long-term. And I think part of the, the opinions, if you will, or the supporting evidence that we put in this is for future boards who are looking at it to understand why this exists. So it's the purpose.
And my, part of my point is I can't support the previous sentence as part of the purpose. I, I was trying to put a little bit of lipstick on the pig and, um, I'll just.
Still a pig.
But no, as, um, um, if we decide to approve this or recommend this.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the city council for the request to amend the Murray City Land Use Ordinance, amending sections 17 dot 76 dot 020 and 17 dot 84 dot 060 and enacting section 17 dot 76 dot 190 residential short-term rentals as presented in the staff report.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hirsto and a second by Commissioner Malkovich to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for their request to amend the Murray City Land Use Ordinance, amending sections 17 point 76 point 020 and 17 point 84 point 060 and enacting section 17 point 76 point 190 residential short-term rentals. Is there discussion on that motion?
Okay.
Okay, let's take a look.
Uh, Commissioner Hirsto?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
No.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
I think we're being a little disingenuous and unfortunately, Commissioner, being a little slack in our responsibility to give something to the council that we believe in. I don't think we believe in this. No.
And Commissioner Patterson?
Well, I didn't agree with it when it was written in 2022 or whenever that was, so no.
Okay. Four to three, right?
Four to three. Yeah. So motion carries.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any additional business?
No, except that I have a flight at eight in the morning, so.
Oh.
So it's fine. It's fine, you guys. It's fine. No, everything's, everything's good.
I hope you already packed.
And then, no, I'm not, actually. Jason's texting me and he's like, what do you want? I'm like, just T-shirts.
Throw it all in.
No.
Okay, well, if there's no further business then.
Nope, no further business, really.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 10:07.
Second?
Second.
My head hurts.
So moved.
Where are we going?